Are we on the mic?
We are now.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for April 13th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sislak due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In-person attendance is limited as a result. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed, or related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and I want to welcome back Pastor David Graham. We have not been doing our invocation for some time. Pastor Graham, please, everyone stand.
Okay, Mayor, and Council, and all of the important people standing behind me, and in front of me. I want to say first of all, in behalf of the Ministers of the town, thank you for keeping the idea of pastors opening in prayer in a city. It doesn't happen everywhere, and it's one of the things that make Boulder City very special and very unique, that we haven't forgotten God in all of our hurrying and scurrying. And all I know about how you all suffer is from the paper, and there seems to be a lot of issues, and I'm going to pray and ask God to bring all of you a sense of peace, and hopefully, the new team that is being put together will be a great one. That's what I'm hoping for. So, join me in prayer, and then we'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Our gracious Father, we do praise and thank you for your faithfulness to each and every one of us, Lord. We don't want to be numbered among those who have forgotten who you are, and that you are the Creator of all that exists that we can understand. And we thank you for blessing us with good-hearted, loyal servants, who care about our town, and care about what's going on, and are willing to stand up to take leadership, and by so doing, become targets. And Lord, I just pray that somehow, in the next few months and years ahead, Lord, that instead of quarreling and bickering and taking sides, and all of the things that we read about, Lord, that we would somehow be brought together as a family, Lord. And we thank and praise you, Lord, for what you are doing in this town, and thank you for the leadership represented by the people here. And I could go on and on, and Lord, I know nobody wants me to, but I love you, and I hope that most of the people who are hearing my words will have a prayer of their own, thanking you and praising you for all the good that you do for all of us. And I pray all these things, and ask a blessing to be on this City Council meeting and on the ones to come, and for the new people that may be joining here, Lord, soon, we ask your blessing upon our mayor, the City Council, and all the officials who make this city go, Michael Mays included. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we're going to pledge. Shall we begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Graham, thank you very much for your words. All right, we will move to our first public comment period. Public comment during this initial period is limited to matters on the agenda. Any speaker will have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Yes, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name.
Hi, I'm Barbara Hunter, Boulder City resident and president of the Board of Trustees of Lendehand of Boulder City. And I'd like to speak on item number eight, the Community Development Block Grant. And Lendehand and this grant, and the city, our relationship goes back to fiscal year 1991, '92. We've been receiving this public service grant since then, and Lendehand has had some challenges during the past year with COVID, but we're still going strong and transporting our clients to medical appointments all throughout the Las Vegas Valley, and helping with errands, grocery shopping, post office, and things in Boulder City. And this grant helps us to continue our mission of helping Boulder City seniors 60 and over, and disabled residents of any age, maintain their independence and stay in their homes for as long as possible. And I just wanted to express my thanks on behalf of Lendehand for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Ms. Range?
Hi, I'm Mary Ralph, and I'm the president of Emergency Aid here in Boulder City. And we have, as you know, a very challenging year also. We've been very blessed with the grants that we've received from Boulder City, especially the CBD grant that I'm talking about tonight. It's been a longtime grant that we've received to help our residents for rent and utility assistance. And as you know, this year has proven even more people in need, but we've had the experience of having this grant to be able to assist them, and help them move forward in their needs. So, thank you so much. We see so many people, hundreds during this whole time, this past year, and I appreciate all that you do for us and your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who's here this evening that would like to speak? Madam City Clerk, did we have someone on the line?
They're not on the line now.
All right. Were there any emails or voicemails?
We received no public comments.
Thank you. Again, if there is anyone wishing to speak, you may call in at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is Judy DeShane. I would like to make comment on some of our items tonight. I'm undecided on the poll ones, so I'm hoping you guys can explain more, and so I can understand it better. Item 10, on the capital improvement, uh, five-year plan. I really am against the city and using capital improvement funds to fund a pet mausoleum. If citizens who have pets want this, I think they need to raise their own money and put it together. I don't believe it should come out of citizens' taxes and part of the capital improvement. Item 11, I'm against building a fund to buy the historic building. If someone donates one to us, that's all well and good, and we need to maintain and do something positive with them. But I don't think the city should actually be buying the buildings. Item 13 is the franchise fees on utilities. I worked on the no argument for this item, and feel it should never ever be enacted for Boulder City. But this wouldn't be a binding vote, this is an advisory question, so if the council feels it's best to take it off, I don't have a problem with them removing it at this time. Item 14, Airport Advisory Committee. The advisory, Airport Advisory Committee got changed quite a bit, three, maybe four years ago, when Mr. Noella and Ms. Lopez, who was then the airport manager, they really took all responsibility away from the airport committee, and they left them with just supposedly helping the airport raise funds. I really think the City Council should go back and take a look at that, and possibly put it back to where it's a working committee and can be, something can be done. Because at that time, they also made it that you had to be a pilot or a mechanic, or somehow have direct airport or airline aircraft experience to be on the committee. And I noticed that one of the applicants for this appointment does not show having any of that, so it almost means you can't appoint that person until you rewrite the rules. So, I hope the committee or the council will do that. And on item 15, some of the bills that you said that the staff advised you to support, I wasn't really happy with them. I would prefer we opposed some that the staff says support. There were too many of them to go into them all, but I hope you take a close look at that. And I guess that's my comments for tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. This is the initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak may call 702-589-9629. Hearing no others for public comment, we will close the initial public comment period, and move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Council, any changes? I'm requesting removal of item number 14. And I will then move to approve the regular agenda with the removal of item number 14.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move then to approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
I just wanted to note there were a few revisions to the minutes, and they're in front of you, and they've been, all the corrections have been made.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
No changes. I would just further note, there was a typo on item 5B that has been, the lessor was mistaken that has been updated in the amended agenda to the correct assign or, excuse me.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Thank you. Council, any changes for the consent agenda? Do we have a motion then for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move then to item number six, presentation by Dr. Deanna Jaskulski. I hope I didn't make a mistake on that?
Not at all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Dr. Deanna Jaskulski, and I'm so proud to serve as the Region Three Superintendent, but more importantly, for this presentation, that I support Boulder City High School, Garrett Junior High School, Mitchell Elementary School, and Martha P. King. Last time I was in front of you, I was relatively new to the position. I've had the opportunity to work with the leaders and educators in Boulder City, and have to say how incredibly impressed I am with their leadership, in particular in the middle of a pandemic, and what they've done to make distance education, hybrid education, full-time face-to-face education work. I liken it to, when you see a beautiful swan on a lake, and it's very calm, and everything looks in place, but underneath they're paddling like crazy, and having the opportunity to walk the buildings, and be in the classrooms, and work with our leaders here in Boulder City, that's exactly what it was. Seamless. Students were just so excited to be back, our leaders and educators so excited as well. So, again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Deanna Jaskulski, Mayor McManus, members of the Council. Thank you for the opportunity here. So, this slide just shows just where we have been in the last year, going from full-time distance ed till now, having our elementary school students in person, face-to-face, five days a week, our middle school and high school in a hybrid model, and I'll dig a little bit deeper into that component. Here was our opening timeline for the Clark County School District. Because Boulder City falls under the rural exception, Mitchell Elementary, excuse me, Martha P. King Elementary School had the opportunity to welcome their fourth and fifth graders back before the remainder of the Clark County School District did on March 1st, which was again, a wonderful opportunity for the fourth and fifth graders here in Boulder City. And last week, on April 6th, that we welcomed our students in kindergarten through fifth grade, face-to-face, and that we've had our seventh and eighth graders, and our 10th and 11th graders return as well into the classroom. So, this is just a visual of our hybrid instructional model, what that looks like for our junior high school and our high school, for the Cohort A and Cohort B, that either attend school on Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday and Friday, with Wednesday being the deep cleaning, and still having the opportunity for that full-time distance education for those families that wanted that choice, whether it be for health and safety reasons, scheduling reasons, and we do have students that have really excelled in that distance education model as well. And I'll talk about that, what it will look like for next school year for our students that have excelled in that model. So, here is just the fall of 2021 and beyond. Lessons learned from the 2021 school year, as I mentioned in the opening, is that we have remarkable leaders and educators in the Clark County School District, especially here in Boulder City, that have really made this work. The blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into it to make it work, the amount of hours that our educators and leaders have put in to make it work, to best meet the needs of our students, and that other box that states student needs, as well as ensuring that we've were meeting the needs of our students individually. The social-emotional aspect of our students, the isolation of being at home on a computer, and working with our MLT teams in our school, which stands for Multidisciplinary Team, and really working to ensure with our teachers and our families that we're addressing the needs of the individual student, whether it be through home visits, virtual visits, phone calls, whatever that individual support may have been for our students. Our schools were able to meet the needs of our students through that, excuse me, the MLT team, the Multidisciplinary Team. Also, to meet the needs of the students individually in terms of academics. So, last time I had the opportunity to be in front of you, I talked about the MAP Growth Assessment, which was a test that the students took in the fall, as well as the winter benchmark assessment, and they will be in the process of taking that assessment in the next couple weeks. And I spoke about why we would do that in the middle of a pandemic. And when we did that, so we knew how to meet the individual needs of our students, again, online, and then welcoming them back into the classroom, and really accelerating some of the content that has been lost, as well as what we call spiraling through, to ensure that any content that was not mastered from our students, they have the opportunity to master that now, and then looking into next school year, and providing intense professional learning for our leaders and our educators, to ensure that they're addressing the needs of the individual student. So, again, that's why we took that assessment, to really know and understand our students. That's not the only piece. Of course, the teacher in the classroom is the expert on our students, but those multiple pieces of information to best address the needs for our students. And then with available resources, that we have the infrastructure now for our schools to be able to provide that support, that we have the one-to-one technology for our students, as well as any hotspots, so those mobile internet connectivity devices for our families that may have not had internet connectivity, that now do have that, so those available resources. In the last couple of weeks, Dr. Jarra, our superintendent, and Dr. Larson Mitchell, our deputy superintendent, had multiple community input sessions, truly wanting to talk with the community about what their needs are for next school year. And with our instructional models, what we have, we'll move into the 2021, 2022 school year next year, and we'll be, you know, with the caveat, of course, you know, the health and safety guidelines of where we are at that time, but working with the governor's, you know, declaration this afternoon or this evening as well, to offer that five-day-a-week full-time face-to-face opportunities for our students, as well as a distance education opportunity. Because again, we do have families and students that have excelled in that model, and we want to provide our families with a choice for that in terms of instructional models. I'm also working with federal dollars, wanting to expand learning time for our students. So, again, knowing that within the classroom, if we have the students, that we're providing that professional learning for, to meet the individual needs, but also to extend learning. So, we're excited that on this coming Monday, April 19th, that we'll be announcing what that will look like for the summer for all of our schools in the Clark County, all 363 schools in the Clark County School District, again, to meet the needs of the students academically, but as well as socially, to be able to come back into school, and to be able to enjoy those activities that they have missed out on, and also to address the needs of students that may need to master standards as well. So, to meet both of those needs. As well as improving distance education, again, knowing that it has benefited some of our students, and improving that piece in the blended model, now that all of our students have a one-to-one device, how do we best leverage that device in the classroom, and for them to be able to take home, and really be stewards of their own learning, and be independent, and really preview some of that content prior to coming into the classroom, to really have a great grasp and knowledge of on that. And we're also very happy to say that we're able to purchase Tier One, so basic instructional materials in the math for our classrooms, our math classrooms, K through 12 as well. So, we have that solid instructional materials for all of our teachers and students, to be able to provide that support, and really to be able to fill in the holes in the gaps. So, we've learned a lot from the past school year. We're excited for the students that have returned. We're excited for our summer learning opportunities, and as well as moving into next year and expanding opportunities throughout the school year as well. So, with that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the report. You know, obviously, this has been an incredibly hard year, you know, not just for, you know, teachers and parents, but especially for students. In talking with some teachers here in the community, you know, some of them have expressed some concerns with the number of students who have not been performing well. I know we've talked about how, while some students have done with this long-distance, this learning distance model, but, you know, some students have really been struggling to keep up with it, you know, and then there's especially concern for those who are already struggling prior to these, the implementation of these protocols. You know, for those students, you know, who are failing, whose teachers really are concerned that they're not ready to advance in their studies, you know, who need more, you know, to move on and provide them that foundation, what is CCSD prepared to do to offer those opportunities? I know you mentioned summer programs, I know you said you'll announce it on the 19th, so I understand.
Couple of days too early here.
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, just if we could get some kind of an understanding of what we are going to do to help those students, you know, get on the right footing, so that they can continue progressing in their studies, so that they're not left behind.
Thank you for that question, and that's extremely concerning to us as well. Again, offering summer opportunities, June 1 through June 30th, having the opportunity for students to recover credit, if they're secondary students that need, that are credit deficient, and recovering that credit, as well as students to master the standards and proficiency levels. And again, we want to offer a mix, so we certainly want to address the academics, it's extremely important and our top priority, but we also want them to come back and enjoy in whatever social activity, basketball, art, whatever it is that they're excited to participate in. But each school will have the opportunity within the district, and will offer, so let me rephrase that, each school will offer a summer opportunity for our students, and then it will be their own students, so they understand where their students are, where they have been, to your point, where they were before, if not performing well, taking a look at the MAP data, the assessment data that we have, and then the individual teacher information on the student, to be able to address those needs in June. There's also our secondary, excuse me, secondary summer school, that we offer two sessions for credit retrieval as well, so there'll be multiple opportunities for credit retrieval, as well as to work with our individual students to ensure that we're accelerating their learning to be prepared for the next school year.
And will that, those will be available in here in Boulder City at these schools?
Absolutely. Yep, all schools.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Now, I have a five-year-old granddaughter down in Phoenix, and I'm watching what's going on with kindergarten and that transition from iPads to classrooms. I'm interested in addressing the socialization and behavior piece, well, part of it, my daughter's going into an internship as a school psychologist, so.
Oh, wonderful.
I know what that looks like, but I'm interested in knowing specifically what you're addressing. I think it's, especially seeing a kindergarten suddenly going into a classroom of other little humans running around, distractions, and all those things that they normally learn as, in the process, starting at the beginning, and sort of plunked down in the middle, so.
Great question. So, the first day that we welcomed our kindergartners back on campus, I was at Mitchell Elementary School in a kindergarten class, and it was remarkable to me to see that it was as if those students had been in the building since August. It was amazing. They were engaged, they were happy, they understood the expectations of the classroom. It looked different, of course, you know, as it's supposed to, but it, if you hadn't known that we had been out since August, you would have thought that these students would have been in class since August. So, we were joking with our elementary leaders that, you know, moving into next school year, no, we cannot start school later because there's no criers. There was literally no, the emotion that you have, you know, with their kindergartners the first day of school, there was none of that. It was excitement, and that was spread across all of our elementary schools. But I was so happy to be in a kindergarten classroom here at Mitchell to see that. But to not, that's not to say, though, there are individual students, that is a difficult transition from being home to being on an iPad, to your point, and then to being back in the classroom. So, we work with those students individually, transition them in, work with the families. We're bringing in, or we brought in families, excuse me, for smaller orientation. We're bringing in, or we brought in families, excuse me, for smaller orientation sessions, and we're also learning from that as well. And so we may have done larger orientation sessions prior that are smaller orientation sessions and really have an opportunity to walk through the building, you know, it is much more intimate, you know, going about it that way. But it's really working with the individual student, working with their family, and working with that multidisciplinary leadership team to address those those needs of our students. And again, knowing that that's just not now, and it's not just summer, but it's also going to be to start the school year as well, because it has been for some of our students a year and a half before they have. So some of our, a large number of students did elect to return to our elementary schools here in Boulder City, but there are some that will be the first time in a year and a half in the fall. So again, to transition the families and to transition the students in to ensure that it's very successful and as seamless as possible for our students.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you so very much for your presentation. It may be too soon, but do you think that you'll have more need for psychological counseling than you've had before?
That's a great question. I don't want to speculate, but just knowing what we've been through in the last year and a half, and that our students will need us as they always have, and this certainly is exaggerated, is really really wanting to focus on that individual kid, knowing that what their individual needs are and wanting to bring our psychological team in. We have a remarkable, the multidisciplinary leadership team that I was referencing does have a psychologist on the team, has a social worker on the team. You know, there's, we're looking to expand our social workers as well at our schools to be able to provide that support, because we know this has been really, really hard. So even though our students that maybe academically have been excelling through all of this will need, you know, some of that support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So for some background, I have students in the elementary, middle school and high school.
Oh.
And then my husband also works for CCSD as teacher. So I've seen kind of, I feel like, all aspects of what's occurred in the last year, and it's really been interesting how it affects everyone very differently.
Yeah.
So, you know, and even my my husband's students are and more in a school that's has kind of a transient area, and so he's seeing the effect that it's had on them versus like other schools here in Boulder City. And I know here in Boulder City, our teachers and our counselors have gone above and beyond to reach out to families and try to, you know, make sure that the each one has been contacted and reached out to, and I appreciate all the work that they've done. And School District has done lots and lots of meetings and trying to get everyone on page and not miss out on those few students that, you know, are falling through their cracks before this and then even more with this exaggerated. I'm excited to hear more about the summer school program next week, I think especially for students that need additional assistance, that will be a huge help. You know, we have a senior class that almost didn't go to school the whole year. And so, you know, if they're missing on academics and not able to graduate, you know, that would be a great opportunity for them, especially to be able to get those credits that they need and allowing children that are struggling to get that additional assistance. What wasn't talked about was employment opportunities within CCSD. I know that since the years we've been here, there's always been some kind of staff shorting, especially with teachers, school psychologists are very outnumbered student ratio. And so I think going forward, if the hybrid or distant education is being used in the future, that would help with those large class sizes that we keep having. Do you have any comment on the employment opportunities or things that CCSD is doing to to recruit high-quality educators?
Yes, thank you for that. And to your point in regards to credit recovery, I know Mrs. Wagner and her team and the teachers, those students have been identified very early on, you know, to ensure that that we can provide the supports for them to graduate. And then when the information in regards to the summer learning opportunities are presented on Monday, I can email them to the city clerk, and so she can provide that information so you have that piece. So. And then to your question in regards to employment opportunities within Clark County School District, we have seen a, we did have a lower number of vacancies this school year, and in terms of our recruiting efforts, we have our first ever Grow Your Own Digital Online Virtual Celebration for our students within the Clark County School District that are moving on to want to be educators into college and the next steps, which is wonderful. So it starts here in town to be able to grow our students. And then recruiting across the country and recruiting diverse candidates as well to welcome them to the Clark County School District. And we have done a lot of work in showcasing what we have done as a district during the pandemic and during distance education to really provide support as a as a as a point as well to welcome other educators to the Clark County School District.
Thank you. I had just one last question. If if there's been any consideration for exceptions for the hybrid model where classes are very small, for them to be able to return to five days, have there been any considerations of changing that to within the school year?
For the remainder of the school year, for the, we'll stay in the hybrid model for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, so those older classes would just stay in the two-day model?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I also want to thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm sure all of us have heard from parents their concerns over the past year. You know, I heard a comedian say the other day, it's the first time he ever heard his children want to go back to school. This has been tough, really tough. You know, whether it was just the fact that they didn't have the interaction with their teachers, students missing out on their athletic opportunities, their extracurricular programs, this has been very, very difficult. You know, I had a question here also about the summer school programs. I've not heard a statistic for Clark County, but I did see something recently nationwide, and I was stunned by it. They said that, I believe it was fifth graders, only about 40% of fifth graders across the country have been participating in any type of remote learning. So there's more than half the fifth graders that are saying essentially didn't go to school at all this year. So I don't know how that is in Clark County specifically or here in Boulder City, but I'm glad to hear you address that you are looking very carefully at how to go forward with all the gaps and the unevenness that are going to occur for the different students. As if being a teacher is not challenging enough, there's all of this to deal with as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, again, our leaders and our educators have done an amazing job to reach out to all of our students that they have not either seen or have not logged in or have not made any progress, you know, in any of the programs, the digital online programs. It is not at at 40% in the Clark County School District. I don't have that that statistic, but I know that they have done just an amazing job to really engage the students. But that being said, knowing that there are students that we have not had the opportunity to reach, and we're excited to welcome them into our summer programs to really have that opportunity to to work really closely with them in the month of June.
Well, thank you. And again, Dr. Juskowski, I, you know, best of luck with everything. You have a monumental task, and I know everyone's working very hard to get this resolved.
Well, I appreciate the support, and most importantly, with Mrs. Wagner, Mrs. Timont, Mr. Day and Mr. Schrock, it makes it easy in Boulder City. So thank you so very much for the opportunity.
We've got some great staff at our schools.
Agreed, 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will move to item number seven, Presentation and Update of the Status of the Boulder City Strategic Plan. Ms. LaPlante?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be here tonight. I don't know if you can believe this, but we're actually in our, going into our third year. This is the two-year wrap-up of our Strategic Plan Implementation Action Plan. As a reminder, oh, thank you. As a reminder, here's how we got here. There were two surveys, one for residents, one for employees. There were four public workshops, two council workshops, and one staff workshop that helped us develop this plan. This update puts us through February 2021. Since its inception, staff has made it a priority to address the five goals and 41 strategies and everything that they've put forward here. As a matter of fact, it's almost always, if you notice in the staff reports, there's almost always somebody pointing back to these strategies and goals as one of the reasons why they're bringing it forward in their staff report. We are getting there on schedule, looking at about 40% complete right now. That first one, achieve prudent financial stewardship. Strategy one, Public Works got tentative approval for the FY22 CIP at their March 10th Special Budget Meeting. They'll be asking council for a final adoption on May 25th. The strategy number five, support nonprofits and volunteer groups. This has been a very big priority for us in the past year, especially with COVID and the effects on the economy. One of the big things that we did, of course, is facilitated vaccine appointments for local nonprofits and volunteer groups, as well as helping several thousand people here in town be able to receive their vaccination. Strategy seven, evaluate the value of expenditures for outsourced services. We issued a golf course maintenance RFP, which is under staff review and will be presented soon for council consideration. And strategy 10, hire and retain a high-quality staff. We recently advertised an RFP to do a comprehensive classification and compensation study. Seven proposals were received. Those are now going through a review process with HR and finance. So goal number two, invest in infrastructure. Strategy three is maximizing the use of outside funding sources for infrastructure. We are working to secure annual maintenance funding along with special projects requests. Staff will begin working on annual funding requests with RTC, and they've also completed their annual Clark County Flood Plane Maintenance Work Program funding request. Strategy four, inventory and prepare a life cycle cost analyst regarding replacement or rehabilitation of city assets. We continue to analyze the most recent CIP needs to determine the next set of studies required to support strategy four. And then strategy five, update the city's comprehensive asset management plan, including an assessment of current conditions. We are continuing to work with the Utility Advisory Committee as well as City Council for updating budget forecasting as well as utility rates. Number three, manage growth and development. Strategy four, determine the best use of land available, available land to advance city goals and priorities. City Council reviews, reviewed the 2021 Proposed Land Management Process List and made changes in the January 26th meeting. Strategy seven, promote multimodal development and connectivity. We're working to secure annual maintenance funding for multimodal uses, including a bicycle path rehabilitation program. Staff is preparing for FY22 funding requests. And then strategy nine, we are taking a look at $75,000 being tentatively approved for wayfinding signage that will help the downtown area that will utilize RDA funds. Number four, promote historic preservation. Strategy two, we've been working on for quite some time now, developing a historic preservation plan. The Nevada Preservation Foundation presented a draft plan to the Historic Preservation Committee in January. The committee provided feedback, and the NFP will present a revised, or did present a revised plan in April. I apologize. They will present a revised plan on April 28th. Amend existing codes to achieve historic preservation goals, that's strategy four. The ordinance ad hoc committee has met several times. It's in the process of developing a draft model ordinance for the community and city consideration. We're also taking a look as we develop that on ways to make sure we're communicating those steps in a clear way. Hopefully, as we continue to open up, we'll be able to host some meetings where we can meet people face-to-face as opposed to just posting the information on our social media and on our website. And then strategy five, identify financial incentives to promote historic preservation. The city continues to see property owners and business interest in the new Historic Preservation RDA grant. Now, don't accuse me of favoritism. I gave these guys two pages because they have a lot going on. Sustain a high level of public safety services. One of the strategies or strategy one is recruit and retain highly-trained public safety staff. This is critical, especially in a time like this, when we really needed people who understood incident command structure, how to respond to an emergency. The fire department completed the Winter Cadet Academy with seven new reserves. They have a total now of 18 that are qualified. All of these firefighters have been tested and met the requirements necessary to be certified by the state of Nevada. The department will continue with the process of researching plans for a permanent training facility in the next year. And then the police department has updated all of its positions and job descriptions to meet the requirements and standards necessary. The police department training program's been updated and now meets and/or exceeds any NV post regulations and state law. And then also, strategy five, identify and embrace the latest technology to improve effectiveness and efficiency of public safety services. Research and recommend technologically advanced public safety equipment. For the fire department, the department is using the new record management system with much success. The system makes it possible to consolidate much of their work into one single source, and the department continues to try to make staffing solutions that meet their needs. And then for the police department, completed and launched City Protect Crime Mapping System, which allows residents to see crime reports in their neighborhood. I don't know if anyone in here has signed up for it. It's pretty great. You can get a daily update on crime that has happened in your neighborhood. You can make the map for the entire city, or you can do it for just your neighborhood. Fortunately, I've made it for the whole city, and I don't see a whole lot going on, so we're doing all right. So absolutely something worth checking out if you haven't seen it yet. It is located on our website. You can find more about it on the police department page. And with that, I remind you that the strategic plan is posted on www.bcnv.org/stratplan. If you have any concerns or questions or want to go back and take a look at the original strategic plan, it is located there. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Since we've had such a situation here, I think you've really advanced quite a ways, and I'm very proud of this. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. It is definitely staff. I mean, the staff has really pulled together in this situation and unprecedented, uncharted, but we've all been able to keep each other going throughout COVID. And, you know, we also understand the gravity of the situation, so many people who weren't able to see their family members, so many people who had to sit at home for days on end. The staff understood that, and that's why we took such a very proactive approach to responding to all of that.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll just second that. I think it's just absolutely shows just how amazing our staff is at having, you know, had to handle, you know, all of the, everything that we've had to deal with with addressing COVID and continuing to to address the, you know, the normal day-to-day functions that the city has to has to address. And it just goes to show that, yeah, like I said, we have, we have a really great staff. You know, everybody has had to, has had to pull some extra weight. You know, I see, I see all the emails I get from you. I know how much work you're doing. I can see just how much work every, every member of staff is really putting into making sure that that we're on the right foot for it, especially in the face of so much adversity right now. So I just think this just really goes to show how great of a job our staff is doing in in meeting these goals.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Bridges?
I like yellows and greens.
Yellows and greens? Yes, we're working on that. We're hoping for more greens soon.
Yeah, I think yellows and greens are great. I remember a time that we had a lot of oranges and reds, and I just, it means that the, the strategies and goals are well thought out and able to be implemented and that work's being done. I love the interactivity of the website and for residents to be able to go on, for us to go, be able to go on and get the information that we need, to have it pushed to us if we request it, as opposed to having to dig for it.
Absolutely.
I guess I just have to third the idea that that this seems to be going really well and that the staff is working very hard, and this has been a most bizarre year. And to be able to make progress on, on goals and strategies where it might be tempted to say, well, well, we just can't do any, we can't do anything right now. We just have to wait, and it doesn't look like we're doing that, so.
Well, it speaks a lot to the optimism of the staff here, because we all keep looking at it like we're soon going to be out of this, so we need to be sure that we're ready when we get out of this, that we can continue. when we get out of this, that we can continue to do all of the things that we need to do that make Boulder City so fantastic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what's been said already, that, you know, I think we've come a long way in the last few years. These goals and priority of the residents that are being implemented have just made us much more organized than we were a few years ago. You know, our, even from, you know, our, how our infrastructure is being done, you know, we look at the domino effect of what they are and getting things more organized and what order they need to go in, and planning with financial, and how much that can be done and what timeframe. And so, you know, I have seen a great, great improvement in how our finances are being handled, how transparent they are becoming, that you can go on to our Boulder City website and look up the budget, what it currently is at, and how much is being spent in what department. You know, that's very transparent and able for the, you know, to have that priority for the residents right there at their fingertips. And, you know, we're moving forward with that with also our, our public safety services, you know, having, like, you know, the newest crime mapping. That's been something that people have asked about, you know, what areas are having what issues, and having that available to the, to the public to look at anytime they want to, you know. And even, you know, I know Chief Gray, I don't think he even unpacked his house before COVID hit, and, you know, I think he told me he was four months without a couch because they couldn't get it ordered because everything closed down, you know. And he really hit this, I mean, that's all he's had since he's been in Boulder City. And, and the OC has done a great job in moving forward quickly. You know, luckily, we didn't need the services of, you know, and beddings and things that were set up, but we were prepared for those things. And our, you know, our safety and our partnership with the hospitals and other nonprofits have really helped the city move forward. And I just think, you know, having the strategic plan, it's very important to, to have staff follow, see the goals of what, and the priority of what the residents are asking for, and they've really done it in a more organized, thought-out way. And, you know, and I see, you know, all these things that come before council do implement a lot of the strategic plan. Some are a little bit of a reach, I will have to say, but for the most part, everything's getting very much more organized than it has been in the past. And so I must say thank you to staff and everyone that's worked really hard to, to really make sure what everything they're doing brings back to this plan. So thank you.
And to go off of what you're saying, we really appreciate the nonprofits in this community too, because when this all happened, they, they said, what can we do to help? And so, working with them, I think, helped keep this community strong through this and possibly keep our numbers of positivity lower than the rest of Clark County.
Thank you. And, you know, so often with these strategic plans, there's, this, a lot of effort goes into getting it developed and public input and all, and it goes in that nice three-ring binder and goes up on the shelf, and that's the last time anybody ever hears of it. That's not been the case here. You, I appreciate your efforts in, in your periodic updates to the council, but what I see as I look over these updates, we make real progress. I, I think that, again, speaks to the efforts of the staff to be able to get these types of things implemented. You know, I was involved with the development of this plan, and I can assure you, no one said the word pandemic at any point during that planning. So then there we were last year with a pandemic on our hands, and we were still able to make some progress. I mean, clearly, that had a big impact on what we were able to accomplish last year, but there were still things accomplished. You know, I had been speaking with Chief Shea about the crime mapping program, and I know throughout this, he and his staff continued to work on this. You know, clearly, it was not a frontburner issue for them, but they continued to do that, and were able to get that implemented. Chief Gray, in addition to everything else he was, had on his plate, got, reestablished the reserve training program. So now we have our first class of reserve firefighters that are going to be able to assist the community. That's real progress, I believe, and not easily accomplished either. There are a couple of things on here that I think, going forward, we need to pay close attention to. You've indicated some of that. You know, again, as this pandemic set in last year, we had no idea what the budget was going to look at. Forecasts were for 40% of revenue to fall for tax income. That turned out, thankfully, not to be the case. It was not as severe as that. But throughout this too, Congress has been passing legislation that has provided funding, not just for the city, but we were able to take some of those funds, matter of fact, much of those funds, and deliver those to the nonprofits who then stood up and did the work that needed to be done, as well as being able to offer grants to our business community. You know, we've been able to put hundreds of thousands of dollars back into this community because of that federal legislation. There's another plan coming now, and I know that Mr. Mays and the staff have been working very hard on identifying where this new money might be most helpful to the community. Again, public service is going to be one, or excuse me, public safety is going to be one of those areas that we will look at carefully for that, to use those funds, but we will also be able to continue to help our nonprofits, our business community. Those types of things are still going to be an issue for months to come, I'm sure. With historic preservation, I think, again, we've made great strides in that. You know, the, I've been here for a while, and having looked at what's happened with some of our historic buildings, you know, every year, we seem to be losing more and more of that. We're now looking at, how can we make it understood in the community that the value is in preserving our history? That is, in my mind, the unique thing about Boulder City, being the home of Hoover Dam. So I appreciate the work that's being done on that as well. I think that we are seeing great progress towards making it a reality, but also making it so this is a benefit for property owners. This is not going to be a burden on them. And other than that, great job. Absolutely outstanding job during this past year. Thank you all very much, all the staff.
Well, and I think a lot of the credit goes to you all for listening to what the needs of the community are and helping us make sure that we can get these pushed through. And, and of course, all of you helping out with getting those messages out regarding pandemic and vaccination clinics and testing clinics. You know, I send it out, I might get a couple of nibbles, but you guys send it out, and it carries a lot more weight, so I appreciate all your help with that.
And I guess the last thing I would say is, you know, somewhere in the strategic plan two, all of the things that are, have been implemented with ordering procedures and, and the budget process and all of that, you know, that was geared towards how we were going to show the community savings. And again, I believe we've done that. I believe staff has accomplished those savings. But, you know, it would be helpful, I think, if we can get something to show the community, this is how your city is working for you and working on your behalf to get the best value for what we can on these projects.
Okay.
You all deserve recognition for what's been done.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Item number eight, matters pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. Mays?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Michael Mays, who are acting city manager and community development director. Boulder City receives approximately $240,000 each year in community development block grant funds, of which we're required to spend 85% of that on capital projects. The other 15% can be utilized for public service projects, and that is the focus of your consideration this evening. In the staff report, we highlight that this is approximately $36,000, and for several years, there's been a division of these funds between emergency aid and lend a hand. We provide the summary in the staff report on page 271. Approximately for fiscal year '22, about $27,000 would go to emergency aid, and approximately $9,500 would go to lend a hand. For your consideration then, is resolution 7267, which would provide those funds to those two agencies, and there is also required public hearing as a part of this process. I can answer any questions?
Thank you. And as Mr. Mays just mentioned, this is a public hearing, so if you have questions regarding the, the grant or the resolution, that's appropriate now. Other questions or comments, though, can follow the public hearing. Any questions at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mays. We will open the public hearing. Again, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak again on this, please feel free to come to the podium. You've had your say earlier, I understand. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number is 702-589-9629. This is a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grants. Again, this is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Anyone wishing to comment may call 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
Yes, I'd like to make public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Judy D. Shane calling. I just think that the Community Development Block Grants are well-used by lend a hand and emergency aid both. They are very, very helpful to many members of our community, and I think they are absolutely wonderful, and that we should give them these, their shares of their block grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing regarding Community Development Block Grant funding. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments submitted for this item?
No comments.
Thank you. All right, we will close the public hearing then. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I would like to disclose that I am the grant coordinator for emergency aid of Boulder City. I have been doing that job for over seven years as an active member of this enterprise. I am both the person who writes these grant proposals, and I administrate all of the grants. Therefore, I do feel it is appropriate that I recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just add the comment that I absolutely think that these two organizations are absolutely deserving of this, of this funding. You know, the, the services they provide our community, they really are the best equipped to provide those services. I couldn't imagine the city trying to take on those, those tasks themselves. So absolutely, this is, I feel appropriate, as, as been shown, you know, this has been going on for, for decades, you know, this support, and I think they've all, they've both proven their, their value to this community. So I think this is absolutely the, the appropriate move for us as well.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would just like to, to agree. These two programs are, are very, very helpful. So many people have come to me on different occasions and had problems, and I've guided them to both organizations, so I think it's certainly something that we should support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to concur with everyone else. I think these two entities are vital to our community, and I fully support them, and I think this would be the best use of this grant.
Thank you. And I do just want to make note that, you know, these are Community Development Block Grants. This is money that Congress sends out. It goes to Clark County first. Clark County then provides funding to Boulder City. Mr. Mays, I want to compliment you on, you know, there's this 15% that we're discussing tonight, but there's another 85% of the money that comes from Clark County. And over the past couple of years, I think you've identified significant ways, projects that can be done. One of those is for lend a hand to rehabilitate a city-owned building so that they can have a little more room to do what they do. You know, we do have other funding mechanisms, but certainly this, I think, is one of the ones that serves the community best. All right, anyone wishing to make a motion then on Resolution 7267? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 7267.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's four, with Councilmember Bridges abstaining. All right, we will move to item number nine, for possible action, discussion and staff directive regarding the municipal pool ad hoc committee recommendation. Mr. Littrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Littrell, Public Works Director, for the record. As Mayor just said, item number nine is for discussion and staff directive regarding the municipal pool. We recently just completed an 18-month, stint is the only word that's coming to mind for the committee. We've been meeting for about 18 months. We just wrapped that up last month, and after the 18 months, the recommendation was to move forward with constructing a new pool. To help us out with that recommendation was SCA Design, who we retained about four months ago, to help us do- ago, to help us do an evaluation of the existing facility, which is Task One. And then Task Two was to put together a proposed plan coming from the list of items that the committee had included that they wanted in the new pool. So that was Task Two. With me tonight is Sheldon Cullen from SCA Design and Nicole Lohman. I'll turn it over to Mr. Sheldon to give you a brief presentation and hopefully answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening. As Keegan just explained, we had multiple tasks in front of us. The first one was to come up with what it will take to take your existing facility into an ADA-accessible facility and to fix some of the problems you may have code-wise. And in doing so, we realize the insurmountable odds that you have in front of you. And that procedure, as I think you have seen in different information provided to you, came in at just a little under $7 million to bring the facility up to the standards it should be. And from there, our second task was to design a facility that was a little more affordable than you've seen in the past and take advantage of the existing building and implement a new building to complement it. And in doing so, we kind of gave a grocery list, as we have from the presentation and the information provided to you tonight. And we started with the base building. And as we've been talking to a few different people around the city and also locally, our goal was to create a pool that was usable by many different aspects. And one of the largest pools needed for what is now a popular sport, water polo, is what you have in front of you is your base cost. And from there, what we did is we took and said, if you want to keep the kid pool, it would cost this much. If you wanted to reduce the pool, it would save you this much. And that's the binder you have in front of you that we have provided. And our goal was to take advantage of as much of the existing as possible with possibly upgrading it in the future. But this will allow you to see what you can do and what the cost would be. And I also do believe that as we come down to it, I think the next step would be is to sit down and do a programming document and get everybody's, that should be giving us an opinion, what they see as a favorable design in regards to use. I know the director of the pool now has a certain requirement. I know the community has a requirement too, and that's to keep the cost down, to make it an affordable option. But I also know that the high school is very adamant about the ability of their kids to compete, and having to take them off-site, that doesn't always fare well. So that is one of our goals too, is to appease the ability for the community to become a competitive aspect of the swimming community. So I'm here to offer any assistance, answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for all this work that you did. It's very helpful. Obviously, this has been a discussion that's been going on for quite some time as to how we're going to address the needs of the aquatic facility. Regarding the costs that were provided here for us, you know, in the ad hoc committee, the pool committee, which I served on, you know, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, a phased approach about how we, you know, so that we might try and keep the pool, the current existing facility, open as long as possible while still also trying to develop the new facility. And I know this is just very early in conceptual and design and everything, but do those costs take into account the idea that it might be a little bit more prolonged of a project than maybe the standard one where you're just going and getting rid of what's already there and putting in something new in that same place?
What we would look at is if that was an ultimate requirement. The one I have presented to you does remove the pool and then build another one. But the problem with moving the pool to the east or west, you know, we would really like to try to take advantage, or north and south, we'd really like to take advantage of the larger parking lot as opposed to just the small off-street parking. To move the pool further north, that would then require us to demo some of the work that's already over there. So you, at one point, you would be removing some sense of, or some sort of use that is being done. If to keep the pool that is currently there and then build a new one while it's still in operation, yes, that would be feasible, and it would fall within the budget that you have in front of you. Because the budget you have does include the demo of the pool, whether it's before we build a new pool or afterwards, it's still in there. I think the biggest cost savings is, as opposed to trying to build a whole new admin area, is to try to take advantage of keeping the building you have and playing off of it as opposed to relocating everything to a new site. I think what you have, it may be old, but it could be usable, and if you're going to keep the pool you got, you're going to have to keep that as an interim administration building and point of entry anyway. And I believe we could get that to work for that price that you have in front of you.
Yeah, I think, you know, it was obviously a tall order for the ad hoc pool committee. We wanted to both have our cake and eat it too. We wanted to, you know, save what we could, you know, use as much as what's there, but also, you know, get the best new facility. You know, we, there was a whole lot, but I really appreciate just how much attention to that detail that you did pay to some of those requests, because I think it shows that, you know, it's not impossible to get something within, closer to within what we can actually afford. You know, like I said, this is conceptual. Some of these things might change and vary, but I think this shows that this is absolutely, absolutely doable. One of my other questions, again, knowing this is all conceptual, but I believe in looking at this, the design, you know, there is an old Girl Scout building that is there and some restrooms, you know, that, you know, I don't know, certainly possibly, you know, historic significance, I'll say. Do you foresee there being any issue with making sure that we can maintain those assets and make sure that they aren't disturbed or impacted too much by the development of a new facility?
No, that would just be within the constraints of a final design, and that would be no problem. I mean, it would just, like anything, if somebody said, as was with this building, we want to take advantage of solar, you know, then we make sure that it, you know, the right element faced south. And, you know, it's just another constraint we work with, which is nothing new to the architecture field. It's really what we deal with all the time, whether it's a problem with soils or bringing in water or making sure the Girl Scout building remains.
Well, thank you very much. And then I'll just add a comment, you know, after, you know, all the discussions that we had on the committee with looking at rehabilitation, looking at a new facility, you know, we really did try to, you know, find the middle ground, and I think that this right here looks to me to be the best. You know, if anybody, you know, looks at it, you'll see, you know, it still incorporates, you know, the entrance and the main building that's still there. We're really trying to incorporate and rehabilitating what can be rehabilitated and then, you know, addressing, you know, there are issues with the pool that need to be addressed, and I fear rehabilitating them is just going to be, you know, money being thrown away when we have to then readdress it in another 10, 15 years or sooner. We just don't know. But with a new facility like this that incorporates some of the older features that can still be maintained, you know, this is, I think, the best use of the people's money. And, you know, really, I think it's in the best interest of this community. So those are my comments on this, and thank you very much for all the work that you've done.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, a couple things, thank you. I like the idea of the bigger pool. I know this is a community pool and for the students and for the residents, but it's also interesting to think about state championships and bringing visitors to experience Boulder City. Come eat meals and enjoy the town and go to some swim meets. The other thing is, I was really pleased to see, and I have to compliment the committee, it's not trying to be something other than a pool. I think we went through a process of looking at something that was a pool and a gym and an activity center and childcare and restaurant. That it's easy to get carried away with losing track of the vision of what this is, and what this is is a community pool. And I appreciate that a lot. But I do like the idea of having the larger footprint, larger pool itself and also the solar, especially being Boulder City, it seems appropriate to have as much solar as we can utilize. That's it, thank you.
The indoor ability to do diving would be nice too, which would then-
Absolutely.
-bring another aspect into the project.
Another way for kids to get to college is-
Yes, exactly.
...and get to practice.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you so very much. I was on the pool committee before I got on council. The pool committee is just a fabulous group of people who really had some good ideas, and it just seems amazing that we finally got to this point. I would like to ask you, we're looking at 21 million, correct?
Presently, yes.
Okay. Do you see any additions to that for, say, extra time that you may need?
It's all kind of highlighted in there. Keegan's done a great job of highlighting how long extending it out will cost. So with inflation, as you know, that's something we wish we could control, but we can't. So of course, the longer it takes, the longer, and the price may raise up a little bit. But our goal would be to not take that as, let's just build it and spend your money. Our goal would be is to say, this is what we want, how can we even save you more money? We're not, we're not salesmen, we're not paid on percentage. So our fee is a fixed fee. So our, you know, if somebody, as constraints go, somebody said, you know, we want to save a million dollars, well, we would tell you how you could do it, and then you'd have to make the decision whether it's worth it or not. That's why we gave you a, like I said, a grocery list on how far you could save. You know, if you went to a smaller pool, you'd save $600,000, $700,000, but would it be worth it? You know, then you cut out water polo. And could the building shrink a little? Yes. But how much do you want to, you know, negotiate out a possibility for a great swim meet or, as was said, you know, just bring in people here for the right reasons?
Right, and I'm glad that you broke it out like this. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think you hit it right on the head right there, is that, you know, the cost is really important to the community, and I think everyone agrees that the current pool and the state that it's in is just not acceptable anymore, and it's, you know, we keep adding Band-Aids to it, and it's just, you know, it closes quite often, and, you know, you try to just keep repairing it. But, you know, this is a need for our city, and, but it is, you know, everyone is very conscious of the cost that it would cost in the long run. So the use of life of the current pool is completely over. Is there newer technology, or what is the expectation of life of a new pool? Has it changed at all?
Yes, and back to the original, the pool you have now, it's not just upgrading it, but there are some unforeseen items that we can't fix. You know, we don't know what's underneath it. We don't, because as some of you do or don't know, it was built on top of another pool, and, you know, it just continually has issues, and there's actually some danger to it, you know? And I'm not sure how many challenged, you know, physically challenged people use the pool, but it's just completely unusable for them. So in regards to the new pool, I believe it was 30 years at least for the new pool when it comes to usability without being a relic, which I wish I had that, you know? So that would be the goal, is to have a pool that would not have to be upgraded for at least 30 years. And the problem with the existing pool is the new codes require every pool to have its own filtration system. This pool does not, so there's a lot of cross-filtering going on. The new pool would have everything state-of-the-art. That's what the goal is for the cost you have in front of you, let alone solar, which is a constantly upgrading system. So I believe that you'd get at least a good 30 years out of the pool before any kind of upgrades would have to be done. The goal is never to have to replace it, like we are in the situation now. The goal is always to have a nice brand, you know, new pool, sparkling clean, ready to keep everybody safe that uses it.
So at the end of the 30-year, it wouldn't be a whole, you know, replacement of a pool, but it would just be maintenance and upkeep, and if there was changes to, you know, the pumps or that kind of equipment-
Correct.
-it wouldn't be a whole, we pull out the pool and start over again?
Correct. And as you know, codes constantly change. Health Department changes their perspective, you know? So as you've seen, you know, this pool stayed this way even though codes have upgraded. We would then have a pool that slight, you know, upgrade in quality of filtration system or handicap accessibility could be added more than it is now, because they also upgrade their requirements. So it would not be, let's rip the building down and move it again. Let's just increase the capabilities of it, but keeping what we have as an infrastructure.
Okay, thank you, and that's much to consider. And thank you for pointing out the filtration system of our current pool, because I think it's important for people to know that it's all shared. So if there was an accident in the kiddie pool, it would go to the dive pool and then to the main pool, you know? So it's important for everyone to know that, like, this is a situation that we're currently in and why we're looking so much into this. So, and it's good to know that, you know, this is something that we're planning for very long term, that it wouldn't be, you know, we're in this situation again 30 years from now, but, you know, we wouldn't be tearing everything out and starting over, that this is, and we'll be able to maintain it in a much easier way, you know, that we're upgraded, because the system, I think, is not really widely used at all. The current filtration system is-
It's challenging.
Kind of a relic.
It's challenging. But, you know, besides not just upgrading the pool, I think if we design it correctly, it could be a catalyst for other items. You know, maybe then the gym does come into play, but that's not right away, and that's becomes a point when it will be used more. There might be other things that come to be that, you know, you need, I mean, you have a good amount of land, you know, whether we build a pool where it is now or whether we move it over and demo that pool, you know, there's still room to expand your abilities here in Boulder City. And it's a great spot, it's, you know, very accessible, and I think it could lead to other things. Once everybody gets excited about the pool and sees how many people it brings, it could be a very good catalyst for more.
Right. So I just wanted to talk on the design itself for a few minutes. I did see that in some of these design aspects that it did have things that could be added later on, like if there was more of a recreation pool or a splash pad, that there's room for those things, and to design it in such a way that if that's the wish of the community in the future, that that could be added on at some point. I just wanted to just say, as a user and a mom, a couple of the designs that I just wanted to add some input. We have a space for a meeting room, which I think is excellent. I think there is, you know, people are always looking for spaces for birthday parties and meeting rooms, and we just don't have a ton of those in Boulder City. So I think a meeting room is an excellent idea, especially in the summer months. You know, we do a lot of gazebos and park birthday parties, but it gets hot in the summer. So having that meeting room, I think, is nice. However, if there was some way to make a way for it to be accessible from inside the pool too, so if you had, because the swimming pool does currently do birthday parties, so there's a way for them to use that space without having to go outside the building and then through the outside doors, that they have an internal door as well that could be shut off when the pools aren't open and people are just using the meeting space alone to allow for something like that. The other thing was, the design element itself, thank you for adding in those arches and really trying to tie it into the historic part of Boulder City. With the use of the, and I know this is very, very right, we're just trying to get the idea so we can get the cost. For the use of, well, the south side parking lot, which is what we'll call Sixth Street, is there a way that we could turn the building around so that there is, those arches are facing the Sixth Street where people would be parking and walking, could walk into the building from that area? Because, you know, right now, we don't have swim meets and stuff, but if we're adding capacity of like 250 people, it would be nice to use that larger parking lot and have a main entrance accessible from there. Is there a way that we could rotate the building around to do that?
We can do anything today.
Okay, let's do it.
Actually, the main pool entrance is off of that side, the one that I've designed. That is the- If that is the kind of, and as you can see, we created a corridor system on the back there with those arches. So parents could then be in the cool shade while the kids are outside playing. And then there's a break for them to come back in. But that isn't indoors, that's outdoors. So on that one, that is the entrance to the main pool right there, off of that parking lot on Sixth Street.
So this is the main, so this is not, this is Fifth Street, then?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is the main?
Yeah, that's the
This is the big parking lot?
That's to the south.
Okay, so that's the big parking lot I'm talking about? So where's the main entrance from there is where? Over here?
And this is the existing entrance over here.
Okay. I can't see that there was an entrance, so
But that's, that's
So could we do the arches on that side so it calls more attention to that entrance?
Yes, yes. I mean, you know, once again, this was just a concept to give you an idea of how you can come up with an affordable design and affordable pool. And all the items that you said you liked came from a lot of the different recommendations we got from the committee. And this is where, from here, this is where you give all those opinions. You say, you know, what about having a corridor system from the outside and, you know, coming in? And, you know, and when is the most, when is it used more? And when is it used less? And that's what we put it all together and then come up with a concept from it.
Yeah, and I commend you for, you know, there's all these competing list items. And you really tried, you know, did a really good job of putting all those into one thing. The last thing I wanted to say is just the, if there is eventually a splash pad there, the difference between this splash pad here and one down that we have at Veterans is the the playground next to it and down at Veterans has the rubber surface. And this one is sand. So probably would want to change that from sand so you don't have sand getting into this filtration system.
Once again, just a, just a concept.
Right. Just for future thought. But yeah, I think you, this is excellent design and it gives really everyone the visual for the first time of like what, you know, all those elements put together in a way that is really workable for the city. Our, you know, our finance has done a great job of getting us to a point that we could finance this in a really prudent and way where we're not taking out a loan or taxes on anyone's property, so.
Also, so you know, we did go to the extent of getting engineers involved and designing the HVAC system, electrical, making sure there's power. The reason is, is we don't want to show you something that can't be done. So we went a little bit further than I think even Keegan had expected us to, but that was our goal for this. The cost estimate came from a large cost estimating company who does this all the time. And they were very intricate, made sure everything was covered. We do have a slush in it. So, you know, I mean, of course, you know, there's overtures, there's things that happen. There's, you know, pools that never knew we were there or there. And so, you know, but we feel that we could do this and maybe even a little bit better.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, I, you know, in addition to the work you've done, I know that you paid a lot of attention to what the pool committee had worked on. You know, pandemic got in the way of that committee's work as well and delayed some things. But, you know, you had mentioned earlier that the current pool is actually built on top of the old pool. You know, in my view, I'm sure somebody thought, well, we'll save a little money if we do it that way. That led eventually to a lot of access problems that we now have at the pool. There are stairs going up and down that, you know, when your feet are wet, stairs are probably not a very good thing to have. You had mentioned possibly retaining the admin building. Are you talking about the locker rooms as well or just the front entryway lobby office space?
In our proposal, you'll see that there is a cost. What we would propose is to build a new project and then demo out the existing lockers and change them into offices, meeting rooms, anything that is then required. Because of the larger pool, it's going to require more staff, more infrastructure. So there is a price in there for that add to, if that is something that is then wished on. Because the existing locker rooms are very not ADA accessible and in a condition that, you know, probably isn't every visiting, competing team wants to visit.
It's okay to say they're in terrible condition.
They're in terrible condition.
See, I told you it'd be okay.
But yeah, we, I took that into account, that we could reclaim those without demoing it and, but keep the rest of it the same. And also by doing this, if the racquetball courts are more used than they are now, maybe, we're also proposing to make them ADA accessible without using that lift and have it accessible from the other entrance. So people could then just go by a, down a ramp and get into them. But unfortunately, you have a lift to a racquetball court that doesn't have a door that the wheelchair could get into.
Right. And again, as you mentioned earlier, standards do change. But, you know, sometimes things aren't thought through when, you know?
We could get it to work.
Right. And sometimes, you know, saving money in the past turns out to be an expensive proposition in the present. You know, you had mentioned, too, that the, to bring it up to code would be approximately $7 million.
Yes, sir.
One of the issues that several members of the committee who are experienced in swimming had brought out is even if that work were done, the depth of the pool is too shallow for it to be qualified to be used for swim meets at this time.
Correct.
So again, this is more for information to the public. Even if we were to spend the money to bring the filters and all of that up to code, the pool still could not be used for swim meets because it was built at a shallow level.
Correct.
Okay. With the way you have laid this out, and again, this is more for the public's edification, you know, I very much appreciate the way you went about doing this. A big goal of the committee was to reduce the cost of the original project that had been proposed and also allow for future expansion. So, you know, there would be not a tremendous amount of upfront or at least as much as the other project, but would still allow the pool to be improved later on if that were desired later on. You know, one of the financing, or the main focus of the financing was this would not result in a tax increase. We're talking about potentially doing this over a period of a couple of years to be able to build the money up, to be able to start the project. When you look at a project like this and you've clearly laid it out that way, do you believe that's feasible then to do this portions at a time?
Yes, it is. Yes, especially the way we designed it. The pools could be done at once. And once we, and once again, the criteria, if that was as we go further and do more of the design and get the different aspects that everybody puts into it, we could design it to meet that goal. Meeting rooms, even though they're wonderful, we could do that later. And that's why we put some of the things as ads. You could, you know, do things periodically. The one item that you probably have to do all at once is the two pools. I mean, that's because there's two filtration systems. There's the pools, there's the upgrade to the electrical system, the filters. Solar could be done later. And as you know, the longer you wait for solar, the better it becomes. But yes, all of that could be done in phases to become more affordable. Keep in mind, just, you know, there's a programming stage, a schematic, a design development, just so everybody knows what they're getting. You could be a year out before everybody agrees on everything and then move forward.
Okay. Another topic that had been discussed at length with the committee. Traditionally, pools have been concrete pools. But there is a pool that's been out there for a number of years called a Murtha Pool. And I know that's a brand name and there are others. Is that a consideration that you also had included?
That is not. I do not believe that was a consideration. We went with what's normal in the industry right now. So that was not, but it was emailed to me. And we did not take the time yet to research all of our different options for pool construction. We did, we did have a pool consultant onboard, and I do not believe that was in their realm of expertise.
Okay, so it's just a type of pool that you haven't had experience with?
Right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, in addition to the work you've done, Mr. Sheldon, I also want to compliment Mr. Littrell and other members of our staff to be able to get this information out to the community. I think the way you've laid this out is very clear for people to see. And the fact is that we are actually trying to shave every dollar we can off of this project, but still have something that's workable for the community. So thank you for your efforts in doing that.
Well, we're here to help however we can. You know, it's not all about the money. It's about us trying to help the community. I've been here a long, I've been in Vegas 52 years. So I understand how it grows. So we're here to help.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 10 for possible action, direction and staff directive regarding modification, addition or removal of projects from the CIP. Mr. Littrell?
Can we step back to number nine for a second? Do you guys want to give staff a direction to go or?
Oh, I suppose we should. You know, we do have the ballot questions that will go on the June ballot regarding funding a $7 million payment from the capital improvement fund. I believe I was told that the current balance of that fund, which is replenished each year, is that Ms. Lellis there who may know this answer? That fund is replenished each year by land lease money, solar lease money. But the balance in that fund right now, I believe, is $11 million. And we're projecting $7 million from that fund at this time. Can I get a nod from Ms. Lellis if that's the amount that's in there?
That's a finance question.
Okay. And I did speak with Ms. Bellator last week. So I'm pretty sure that $11 million. Plus then each year, there would be another $1 million from solar lease funds. That's not actually part of the ballot question. The other ballot question was Track 350, which is the land around Boulder Creek Golf Course, to use 90% of the proceeds from that land sale towards this project. So those are the two funding mechanisms that are on the June ballot. As far as direction goes, you know, if we do not get the funding for this, you know, we will have a study that will go on a shelf. So any questions or comments from other members of the council? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I, after, you know, it's hard to relate in a small amount of time, the 200-page report that we have. But I think after studying it, it would be who the city to do a replacement versus a repair. I think that would be, in the long run, benefit for the city. And so I would just encourage all those voters out there to support these ballot questions and to get us to that point. We have the money to do so, and I think it would be the best use for that money to go that way. The original money for the land around the golf course, Track 350, the 90% originally was to go towards debt of the golf course. That debt no longer exists. So without another ballot question, which, you know, moves it to another place, it would just go in the general fund. So we do have a financing source for doing a replacement of the pool. And I think it would be who the city to do that. Obviously, if that fails, then, you know, we would have to look at, you know, maybe doing a repair. But I think it's really up to the voters at this point. But I think and encourage them to go towards having a replacement of the pool.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Well, I'm just thinking that maybe we need to market it a little bit and let everyone know a little bit more about it so that they totally understand it. Because we don't have a whole lot of time before the election. And if we really want this to pass, if it doesn't pass, it's going to be very, very sad because we've tried before. So I think we really need to market it.
Well, again, and I will just mention that staff has done an excellent job of making information available. State law prohibits any type of either opposition or support for ballot questions. Elected members of council, members of council are not subject to that. So we cannot ask staff to do anything other than provide information. They are not in a position due to state law to, quote, market anything.
Okay, well, I guess I should say, give us more information.
We can educate.
Give the public more information and not market it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, having served on that committee for a long time, I mean, there was a lot of discussion and how to try and get this done and the help from finance in trying to find other means to actually address this. Either way, the pool has to be addressed. The issue with the pool has to be addressed. I think it's very clear to me that this is the most appropriate way to address it, you know, for, in the best interest of our community. So, you know, certainly, I think the direction we should be heading and looking at is what we have here before us tonight with a new facility that rehabilitates part of the old facility with it. You know, obviously, this is all going to be dependent on how the ballots turn out. You know, so obviously, there's only so much we can do at this very moment. But I think in general, for the public's interest, you know, in trying to determine, you know, whether they think, you know, this is an appropriate use of the money, you know? We've got a lot of information out there. We've spent months and months looking into this and doing so in a transparent way. So if there's any questions about how those meetings were conducted, you can go back on YouTube and watch all of the ad hoc pool committees. You know, it might sound dry, no pun intended, but it really is, there's a lot of information there. And I think that's going to be the key in getting people to understand the questions, getting people to understand the needs of the thing is to just, you know, be sure that you get out there, read the information, we have it available, and then make the best decision that the voters, you know, that the voters will make the best decision that they feel for the community. So certainly, my predilection would be to move towards this new, a newer facility.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I seem to remember a lot of concern before by people that this was going to affect their taxes. You know, you start talking about general obligation bonds and what's that going to do to? How much is this going to cost, people? And to me, it's just, it's wonderful that we've come up with a solution that doesn't do that, that doesn't increase the cost of living in Boulder City and give something in return. I really appreciate the way the financial plan was laid out. And I do, too. I hope that people see this. I know people want a pool. I mean, a lot of people have told me that they really like a pool. And this is a reasonable pool with reasonable way to finance it. And so I don't know what that means in terms of giving direction. But I think the general direction is, is that we hope that that's something that passes in June and we can move forward.
The way I understand the ballot question is, it's written very well that whether you guys decide to repair the pool or build a new one, that ballot question still needs to pass. We need the money to do something. So if people are in favor of a new pool or a pool in general, having your guys' support right now, I think will help come June.
Thank you. And I, you know, again, as Councilmember Adams has pointed out, he and I served on that ad hoc committee for quite some time. I think that the people that were on that committee made some excellent recommendations. City staff has already created a webpage on the city website where you can actually City staff has already created a webpage on the city website where you can actually go back and read all the minutes from the meetings, look at these design plans that Mr. Sheldon's firm has put together for us. You know, at some point in a community like Boulder City, we have to understand that the pool that's there has been there for 40 years. Pieces of things were there even prior to that. Stuff wears out, and as a community, we are going to have to replace those from time to time. I think Councilmember Folda pointed it out correctly that, you know, we've used up a 40-year lifespan of this pool. And if we were to build a new one, we would have a 30-year lifespan. So yes, it's a lot of money. There's no question that it's a lot of money, but it's spread out over quite a period of time. And, you know, based on what I've seen of the pool, you know, we can go down there, we certainly talked about it on the committee. There's things of refinishing the surge trenches and doing things like that that are simply just deteriorating right now. So we can put some money into it. But it's never going to be up to standard without a significant amount of money being spent on it. And we are in a, probably a short window of time where if there is not significant money for this pool, the facility closes. Is that?
Yep, that's my understanding too.
Okay, so we're talking about, that's it, it's just gone, it's just done. And I don't think that we should be in that position as a community. We have the money to do something like this, the solar leases or long-term leases, that revenue comes in each year. We can count on that. This is a doable project for this community. As far as direction to staff, I'll be honest with you, right now, I think we're just, we're on hold. Until we hear from the voters in June, I don't know that we can do much more. We have the study, we have the information. As far as additional information goes, I think that can be done as just requests from the community to staff if there is additional information that's required. I know one suggestion that was made is to perhaps have city staff be available if people want to take a tour of the existing facility and see what condition it's in. So that, I guess, we could provide direction to Parks and Rec that they could make tours of the current facility available if people want to see what conditions are there now. Any other recommendations for direction? Well, I'll make that motion then, that staff would be available to provide information requested by members of the community and also have the Parks and Rec staff be available to provide tours as requested by members of the community.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, Mr. Littrell, thank you very much. And again, the community really, I think, needs to understand the conditions that are there now. If they're not addressed very quickly, we will just be closing the facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to item number 10. So Mr. Littrell has not had an opportunity to sit down yet?
I'm okay.
All right, and this is again regarding discussion of items on the five-year capital improvement plan.
Correct. So item number 10, I'll start. Keegan Littrell, Public Works Director, for the record. As the mayor just said, this is a discussion and staff directive regarding the modification, addition, or removal of the draft five-year plan. Mayor, you had requested this item and had a few items that you would like to discuss. Do you want to go down through your list or do you want me to? I've got a few items that I want to add some additional information to, whatever order you want to go.
Go ahead.
Okay.
With yours, that'd be fine.
Okay. First one I want to talk about is the council chamber remodel. I've been talking with staff and some of the employees about options, what we can do in here, discussed possibly flipping the building. First thing that comes to mind to everybody is the ADA access. We don't have access through this door. The whole building has been struggling with ADA access. So some of the ideas that we've thrown out for improving the ADA access here, the first is city clerk's not going to be in favor of it, but was removing their storage and creating a hallway behind this wall. That's not my favorite plan, but that is an option. Another option that has recently been thrown out is, and then this is thinking outside the box, but where you guys are sitting up there is maybe making that tiered, where you have three members in front, two in the back, or on some of the committees where we have seven members, it would be tiered. So you'd have two rows, but we could shorten it up to create a hallway sitting behind Ms. McKay and Ms. Walker. So that wall wouldn't have to remove, the storage remains, we'd have a wall there. And then we could have a door so you could get to your seating up there. And in the future, or with this project, is a ramp on this side for any council member or committee member that needs ADA access. When talking about flip-flopping the room and putting you guys back here and all the recording equipment back here, that's going to be a hefty price tag to be able to do that. I believe it was going to be 40 or 50 grand to be able to move all the cameras, the lighting, the microphones, even the podium we'd have to move wires for. So that's, that's one option is doing that. But again, we would have to shrink down the dais because it's not going to fit on that end of the building without removing that wall. And I don't know if that's a supported, support wall. So I'm in favor of keeping the position that we have now, but with some different options there. Of course, it's your guys' decision on what we want to do. But another suggestion that I had would be to use some of the reallocated money that we have from the CIP, the special projects fund, from past projects that we've either closed out or have completed. By doing that would allow us to start ordering material now. And then when the first meeting in July, the day after the first meeting in July, we could start the project hot and heavy. Our guys would be able to get in here and they would have three, four weeks to be able to get as much done as possible. It's not the end of the world if we want to wait until the next fiscal year. That's just one good suggestion that was made to me. There's even some minor projects that they might be able to start where they could get it done in the two-week timeframe between meetings and then clean up the morning or the morning of council, the morning before, just to make it so it's presentable. So that is one question that I have for you is if you guys would be okay with that. I know the reallocation money right now, as of February 28th, has approximately $3.8 million in there. And depending on what changes we're talking about, I know previously we tend to approve the $80,000. I'm thinking more like 100, 120 to be able to construct a wall. We'd have to do some improvements to the door and add a door. So there's lots of options that we can go with. So looking for feedback on, first, the reallocation and second, what route you would like to go with, with the remodel.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So are you with the wall hallway scenario? Would that wall be blocked, that door would be blocked off from the room and they would come down a hall and then come in one of the other?
There would be one door behind Councilmember Adams for council members to step up. But then it would just be a hallway all the way across.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to add windows or what we'd want to do. We might have to add another door part of the way back, just for, like an escape route if there's a fire or something. I'd have to look through the code for that, but it's just an idea. One thing I forgot to mention is, we don't need these, well, for COVID, we need these giant tables to spread out. But when we're done with the social distancing, we don't really need these large tables here. If staff can remain in the conference room and come in to present, then we don't need. I know in years past, there was multiple staff members sitting at one table, so we wouldn't need that. We'd just need a table large enough for the city manager, city clerk, city attorney. And it depends on the layout where we would do that, but we definitely don't need these giant enormous tables. So that would in turn provide more seating for the public.
Yeah, so that was my only concern was that, I know it's kind of embarrassing for people to come in, in the middle of the meeting and you have to use that door. So if it was blocked off completely, that they could come in through a hall.
Yep, they'd be able to come all the way back and then enter in the back of the room.
Okay. So that, you know, that would be improvement. And I agree with these tables, it takes up, I mean, just our two tables and the dais takes up half the room. So, yeah, to limit those down a little bit, I agree too. As far as the funding, I think, you know, we do have that reallocated money that's just not scheduled for anything. So I wouldn't be opposed to using that for whatever we have. Also, the Smith Center is set up that we could, if needed, have a meeting there. Is that correct? If there was something that we would need to, because we're not the only one who uses this room. So there's other committees and commissions that could be set up somewhere else.
It would definitely take some coordination with the scheduling. Holly may know, are we set up over the Smith or?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Okay. Back to Zoom. We'll see how we're tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah.
We could do with a tripod and a little camera.
Yeah, I think COVID has helped us be a little more flexible in how we conduct our meetings. So I think that might help with, if we need more time for construction in here. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, okay, so however, there is storage back there behind this wall?
Yes, yep.
Is there any other place to store stuff?
That's, isn't that, Tammy can chime in on this, but that's, I think that's a requirement to have it on site.
It is a requirement, and you would have to find a place. It's already, it's controlled, air-controlled. All the permanent records are in there.
Oh, okay.
So they would definitely have to be moved to a different location here.
Okay, and I guess my concern is about having windows is it could be disruptive if somebody comes in, yeah, through that, through that way. So that would be an open door, just a?
The, I?
Not this door, but if there was another door?
Another door. I was thinking more, I don't know if it'd have to be a secured door, but whether it's a glass door with a shade on it or a solid door just for the council members to get up there. Because we don't, if someone comes in that back door, we want them to be able to approach to the back of the room, somebody from the public. But we can, when we get into the design and figure out exactly what we want to do, we can decide door types. And the windows was just a suggestion. It's nothing we have to do.
I have concerns about the tiered thing. It's, I know we all have our lap, iPads and laptops and notes and things. I guess my feeling is no matter who sits up here in the top, it would be very distracting to have somebody writing and typing and doing whatever it is that they're doing on another tier down. So that's the only concern that I have about a tiered dais, but?
Another approach that at least the past community I came from is the dais was more arched. So you could squeeze it in better if it was more arched. Of course, it's removing the whole table and building a new one or constructing a new one. But that is another way to do it is more curved.
If it was more arched, then they would use that door, people, somebody coming in who needed ADA entry would come in that same door.
Yeah, the reason I'm saying more arch is so we can put the new wall in. So, and then we can, I don't know exactly what's behind the corner where the calendar is, but maybe we could open that up a little bit. Because right now, it's a tight squeeze getting through there. I'd have to, I did look in the back of the storage and I didn't go all the way in the back. There was plenty of boxes and stuff stored in there. So we'd have to explore what's in the corner to see if we can open that up. But that would be the idea, just basically extending this wall.
I'd be interested in more, more curved. And how many gallons of paint for the wood paneling?
I'm going to auction that. I heard one of our council members wants to put a bid in on that.
Put it on my van.
Having grown up in dens when I was a kid with wood paneling. It's reminiscent, but it's a little old.
Yeah.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. With regards to this item, I'll just say that, you know, what we need to address is accessibility and functionality in the room. You know, as far as, you know, aesthetic modernization, you know, that's, that's not important. You know, if we're going to be spending the people's money to address, you know, the functionality of this room, it needs to be to grant greater access. You know, I sit here and there's a reason why this section of the wall is all banged up and there's scratches and dings and everything. It's because when people come through in a wheelchair, especially the larger motorized ones, it's a tight squeeze and you can't, you can't get through here easily. And that creates a real issue, you know, because there are all sorts of issues that come before us that people have real reason to be in front of council. And if they, you know, feel embarrassed or whatever in trying to squeeze and it, you know, it is something that needs to be attention is required to get, just get somebody through the door. So I think, you know, certainly with the discussion of a more arched thing, where we're more facing each other too, I think would be a little bit of a better thing where we're not giving up too much space and we're not giving up the ability for people to sit around. In fact, you know, you might be able to, to not necessarily fit more, but I think that, to me, sounds like a very reasonable option that doesn't really encompass, incorporate a whole lot of other necessities to, to have to, you know, knocking down this wall and all that sort of stuff. Because really, you know, if this could just be extended, you know, if this could just be widened, you know, there's, that alone would be of great help, you know, and then just the functionality of all that sort of stuff. So as far as that direction, I think it is something that needs to be addressed. It's something that we have to, have to work on. I think the reallocated money, I think, is, seems appropriate to me as a good place to look for it. But again, accessibility in this room has to be addressed.
Thank you. You know, this started out as just freshening the room up a little bit. That's what I had suggested.
Things, they grow.
But certainly, I mean, there's, Councilman Adams certainly has a point that, you know, this building was built in the 1930s. It's a magnificent building, but needs change over that period of time. You know, I certainly like the idea as well, you know, whether we talk about, you know, making it more arched or U-shaped, I think that's probably a better solution. If there was going to be a wall there, you know, your tiered suggestion, I think, is a good suggestion. And that could be used for either committee members who serve on large committees or staff members. Again, I think you're right that as items come up, staff members can come in for their item. We don't have to have everyone in the room all at one time. So I think that's a possibility as well. The room, obviously, with the video equipment and all, it's set up to have the dais at this end of it. But that's been a problem for other access. So if the dais can be made narrower within the room and if we could do something with these tables for staff seating or over, you know, large committee seating, I think that would be excellent. I don't know if you or anyone knows what might be under here, but clearly, we don't have enough electrical outlets and, you know, no data connections, things like that. So I don't know if that's something that can be put into the project or not, or what the cost might be. But those would be my considerations is even if the dais needed to be U-shaped to save that room on the sides, I think that would be a better solution. And then removing the large tables and having tiered seating on one side or the other or both sides might be a solution for that as well. And allow us to have, you know, a little more seating for the public by doing so. And I would just suggest that rather than worrying about a door up close here for the council to use, a door further down where, you know, I mean, most council members would be able to walk the few extra feet. And that could then be used for both council members and the public to access the chamber. Any other questions on this item, comments? Is that sufficient?
Do you want to vote on, let me use the? Do you want to vote on let me use the reallocation?
I will move to use the reallocation funds for the remodel. Shall we put a budget on you of 100, no more than 100,000?
120 would be better, but we can make 100 work.
Okay, you're going to be tough on us. All right, 120,000 maximum?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. The next one, which was tentatively approved at our last meeting, was the historic structures report for the water filtration plant. There was an error when we put the dollar amount in there. The quote we got from the consultant was roughly 120,000. But when we had put it in the packet for the information, we had only asked for 100. So I was wondering if we could switch that to the 120, 125. I think it was just over 120 for their historic structures report.
Questions or comments regarding that report, increasing the allocation? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Personally, I think that whatever we can be doing to keep moving forward on taking care of that building, we we seem to have a clear vision of where we want to go. And and this seems to be that next step that that we need to take. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges, do you wish to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to increase. Is it increase the budget for the historic trust, excuse me, historic structures report to 125,000?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The only other one that, oh, there's two more. One was an add-on. It wasn't on your list, Mayor, but you guys already approved the water meter grant earlier in the consent agenda. But we wanted to include the grant match, which would be 75,000 coming out of the water infrastructure budget. So we wanted to add the water meter 75,000 match.
Okay, and just by way of explanation, that's a grant opportunity available made through the Bureau of Reclamation.
Correct.
That would allow us to get funding for replacement of aging water meters, replacing them with the radio read capability in addition to replacing meters that are 30 years old potentially.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? I will move to budget the 75,000 for the match from the Federal Bureau of Reclamation for that grant program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. So the last one that I have information on is the community gardens. Mayor, you'd asked about possibly including another community garden or two. We had received a an estimate from a company to install the the planners, irrigation, everything. That estimate comes in about $100,000 per community garden. There would be some additional yearly costs. For the most part, the the gardeners do their maintenance, they're cleaning the weeds. But occasionally, our irrigation team or our landscape team has to come out and fix some more major repairs. It's it's limited, but it's a a dollar amount that I wanted to include on the sheet, which is about $4,000 a year. But then it also increases staff time for Parks and Rec with the registrations and everything that they do. So I wanted to include that on there, too. I was told that we currently have 15 people on the wait list right now. So I don't know if we need two gardens or, as one staff member says, if you build it, they will come. But a couple of the locations that we were thinking of, the first and best thought that we had would be down near ABC. It's centrally located. We have the infrastructure there, water, to be able to do that. And then another option would be down by Veterans Memorial in the corner, right by Buchanan and Veterans Memorial Highway. We have the infrastructure there, too. But it's, there are, there is neighborhoods right next to it, but it's not essentially located.
Well, I had brought this forward because, again, I have heard from people that, you know, they've been waiting years in some cases and not been able to get one of the plots at the one existing garden that we do have in town. You know, 100,000 is a little bit more than what I was expecting. You know, I don't know how much of that the cost might be reduced by having the people who wish to use the garden do some of the work. I know I've attended a presentation before. There are at least two organizations in Southern Nevada that work with community gardeners, teaching them how to build their own plots and all that. If they're, if the waiting list is only at 15 right now, I would believe that that many plots or maybe even a few more could be done at ABC Park. And then we can evaluate the need after that to see what else might be desired by the community. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, is there a, is there a process right now of making sure that the people who are granted a plot in the community gardens are actually using it and not allowing them to go fallow?
I'm getting the nod, yes.
Thank you, Roger. Okay. So I know that when I first moved here, that was an issue, that there were plots that had gone fallow and and people just didn't do what they were supposed to do. So what is that process? Is it people go out and check and make sure that?
Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director. Basically, what we do is during the growing season, we we send out flyers to the the gardeners and with information on how to start your plot up for for spring planning. And then we have a staff member that goes out at least once every couple of weeks to make sure that the ground is being tilled and the proper things are being done. If 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 there's a problem with a certain plot, all the plots are numbered. There's 25 plots out there. And what they do is they, we either write them a letter, we have the list of people, we contact them, email them normally, and just say, are you still working your garden? We noticed that you haven't planted for the spring. And and we put a little pressure on them. And normally, they either make the decision to go ahead and do the garden or give it up. We have public works look at it, make sure the irrigation system is working, and then reassign the plot. So that's that's the process.
So most of them are being actively.
Oh, yes.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
And right now, as Keegan said, we have 15 on the waiting list.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Roger.
And Mr. Hall, before you go, I believe there is an annual or monthly fee.
There's an annual fee of $25, which is paid to the Parks and Rec Department. They people come in, they fill out the paperwork so we know who's who's managing the plot. They pay their $25 and they're issued email, they're issued a number on the automatic irrigation so they can up their water during the hot, you know, hot summer months. And there's some information that we give out to them, the rules and regulations and so forth.
Okay, I thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the users do pay some. It probably does not cover all of the cost, but they do pay some for having the plot there.
Yeah, $25 per year, yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, yes. I was just wondering, the $100,000, is that in-house or is that someone outside?
That's a contractor. Yeah, that's a contractor doing it.
That's a contract?
Yep. There is the potential. I haven't talked to the guys yet, but they seem pretty willing to do whatever is asked of them. It just depends on staffing and time availability. But I'm sure they could do it themselves. I might get in trouble tomorrow when I get to work. They might be mad because they've got other duties to tend to, but they're very capable. So 100,000 is for a contractor to come in and do it all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Yeah, certainly, $100,000 for a garden is certainly more than I than I was expecting here. But if there's ever a group of people who don't mind, you know, getting down on their hands and knees and getting a little dirty, it's gardening people. I know, you know, when I was younger here, there was a number of projects in planting the trees along Adams. You know, there's always been a number of community events and where the community actually participates in in some of these steps. So I think there absolutely should be a way to to avoid spending $100,000 on community gardens. You know, there's, there's, there certainly has to be be one. That being said, there absolutely is a need for one. I hear all the time from people who, you know, similar to what the mayor had said, I've been waiting, you know, you know, and they've, everyone's got their complaints. And I would, I would think that if there's 15 people on the waiting list, there's probably even more, you know, who are interested, who who aren't on it because they hear, oh, there's this waiting list, what, you know. So there is, there is a real need for it. And, you know, when we talk about having community gardens, we should do our best to try and accommodate, you know, the entire community. So I think there's a need for it. I think ABC Park is is an appropriate centrally located park. And I think we should move forward. I it's not, I'm hesitant, you know, with that type of a price tag. But again, I think there's got to absolutely be a way for us to to set up the plan or set up the irrigation. And, you know, it's not, you know, it's, it's common work that gets done, you know, irrigation and plots and getting everything ready. It's not rocket science, you know, it just takes somebody who has the the technical know-how to to make sure it gets done. So I think it's, I think it's an appropriate direction for the city. I'd like to see us bring down that $100,000 price tag and find out how we can do that. But I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with this.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I was just looking, just but just for grand, seewegrows.com, how to grow a community garden. I think that some of the options might be a committee, you know, kind of like the pool, a committee of people who are very involved in the garden projects. And and see if they could come up with a way that a piece of city land could be used as a community garden and come up with a design, come up with a presentation, maybe get some assistance from in-house, and and have a time when they could work on it and build it. It seems like something that would would bring that group of people together if if there's a waiting list. I know that I know several of the people who are gardeners and they are passionate. And I think if they knew that putting together that passion along with some hard work could could do that. And then it would cost a lot less than $100,000. PVC pipe and dirt.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Folder?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to concur with the statements that Mayor and Councilwoman Adams, that the first thing I thought of, too, was the people that helped plant the trees along Adams still talk about that, you know, and nothing creates more pride in in wanting to take care of something than and then allowing them to be involved in the process. So, you know, I'd be, I agree that, you know, I think there's, and there are groups that already form and meet regularly in Boulder City, that garden. I know they work on our Rose Gardens over at the cemetery. So there's, there is a great amount of people with the gardening passion already in Boulder City. And so if we could look at kind of those sources. But I agree that ABC Park would be a good location and to start there. I think there are people who are not on the waitlist that would want to be involved in this. But yeah, there, I've heard that also as well. There's been years on the waitlist to get in. And so that might have deterred that list from growing anymore. But also just to start with ABC Park and then move on, if, you know, and grow it maybe at Veterans if that's, if once we see how it works with ABC Park.
Well, I, you know, again, as I said, when I had initially brought this forward, I was not anticipating a cost of the in this range. If we were to set a cost of, let's say, 50,000 for the design, I know we've talked, well, let me ask you, in this proposal that was obtained, is that for fencing off this area? Was that included?
I don't believe so. Roger, you mean?
No.
Okay. So we're talking about just scraping some dirt off, running irrigation pipe to it, building the planners, that was all 100,000, and no fencing. Okay. I will go ahead and make a motion that we budget $75,000 to include the initial design of the project, identify the requirements as far as getting water to the area, and how much it would cost to install the irrigation. And then elicit help or input from interested parties here in Boulder City as to what they would be willing to contribute. I know, for instance, the extension service at UNLV has a program that supports community gardens. Anyone wishing to second that motion?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Any further discussion, additions, amendments?
I just have a question on for staff of the proposal. Did it, what was the amount for materials?
Do you remember, Roger, or you have it with you?
Yeah.
He's more prepared than I am.
I don't think it breaks it out.
No, they don't have, it's not a, not a breakout. They have 99,120 for, yeah, they just have.
It'll be 25 individual plots, just like the existing.
Yeah, they just have.
So they took a model similar to what's already existing and just with the basically retaining stone wall.
Right, and then.
They have the scope of work, the planter bed construction, and then the irrigation.
To break up the material.
Yep. And then they have included some DG or chat walking paths, rock drainage around the area, just so it's not getting flooded. So yeah, it's, it's not an itemized quote or estimate.
But I think that amount would get us a long ways with materials because really, they just use the stone planter for a wall and then it's just the dirt and individuals, individual lines for the different plots. Okay.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Littrell, I mean, I, we don't want to budget this money if you don't feel that that's sufficient to at least get the project started.
Well, to be completely honest, I was shocked by the 100 grand also.
Well, then we're in agreement.
Yeah. I think by the way you explained it with using some in-house, some public participation, I think we can get it done. And we'll definitely learn as we go. I've never built one before. I've built houses, but have never built a planter bed. It can't be that difficult. But I think we can get it figured out.
And I can tell you, I I helped build the horseshoe pits down at the multi-use building.
So we'll, we'll see you down at ABC on Monday?
You know, they they came and dropped off the lumber and there were about six of us there. And by the end of the day, they were finished. So.
Okay, we'll see you down there.
I'll bring the hammer.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add that, you know, while this is a lot of money, it at least shows that we do have some skin in the game. And I think once we do that, then we'll, we'll have members of the community move, come forward and really help us get this done and tackled without having to actually spend all of the, all of that money. But I think it at least shows that we have skin in the game and that we're actually very serious about making sure that we get some more community gardens out there for our community.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'd, I'd also like to see, and and we could do it in a way that doesn't cost, but some promotion to encourage public participation in this, that it would be a community garden event, a, a public project.
I think we know there's going to be some cost, you know, wherever it is to get irrigation to that. You know, I would much prefer having public work staff take care of that type of work.
Oh, sure, sure. But I think that.
I do have, you know, tools to work on pipes, but yeah, probably not a good idea.
But in terms of some of the, some of the easier labor and, you know, spreading dirt and things like that, that could give the residents who are especially going to use it a sense of pride of ownership.
Anyone else? All right, the the motion is then to budget $75,000. Anyone else? All right, the motion is then to budget $75,000 for design work and irrigation, and then elicit support from the community. Mr. Adams, I believe, had second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Two other items that kind of go together, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had the golf carts for the golf courses, the golf cart leases, and then the VERF were both listed on here. My understanding was that you wanted to see both of those to show that the golf cart leases were in fact moved back to the CIP and are no longer in the VERF. So those project sheets were given to you previously and were attached on this. So if you want to discuss that further, or?
Well, again, I think that that was what we had discussed, was the fact that expenses originating from the golf course should remain shown from the golf course, and that the vehicle, equipment, and replacement fund should not be the fund that supports those golf carts. If there's not money in the parks and rec budget, clearly, it's a general fund expense for the golf courses. And I would rather have that information shown that way for transparency to the public as far as what the actual costs involved with running the golf courses are.
Yeah, so you'll see in the attached sheets to the agenda that the golf course does have the golf cart leases in them, and then the VERF no longer has them in there.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that issue? Any disagreement that we want to do it that way? All right, thank you.
And then the last three, these ones are on you, Mayor, right? Control Tower, Fuel Farm, and a pet mausoleum.
Well, let's start with the pet mausoleum.
Okay.
You know, we have had issues over the years with pet cemeteries that are located out in the desert, that as things happen, these areas come into conflict with different things. Most recently, the Skylar Solar Project, it was found that there was a pet cemetery there. I had gone out there with Blair Davenport from the Historic Preservation Committee to take a look at it. As Blair and I were looking at it, she was making notes and doing a description of what was there. We realized that the fence line of the Skylar Project was only a few feet into this particular area. And I had spoken with Mr. Mays about that, there was conversation with Skylar, and Skylar said, you know what, we'll just bump the fence in on that corner, and we can leave that area alone. So that resolved that situation. But, you know, we have five acres of land, is my understanding, at the animal shelter. That's how much land has been set aside for that.
That's my understanding, too.
Okay. So we have land available. I'm assuming the current facility might be using maybe a half acre or so?
Yeah, not much more than that.
Okay. So we do have land set aside for it. I think we have that need within the community. The idea is that people who wish to use the facility would pay some type of perpetual fee. In other words, they would pay a fee that would go towards maintaining the facility into the future. Of course, that fee would not catch up with the design and construction costs for some period of years. But to be able to build something that could be expanded if needed later on, I don't think we're looking at a tremendous facility. And again, we may find that members of the community would also want to be involved in a project like that. So my proposal is, at this time, to budget money for design of such a project, not necessarily the construction of it, but for the design of it. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
With regards to the budgeting for the design, about how much are we thinking a design for something like this might cost us?
I don't have a good estimate on that. This is new ground for me. And it all depends on the size of what we want to do.
I would offer, these things do exist, they are out there. So I think there are some ideas that could be looked at as far as that design goes. You know, clearly, this is a desert environment. I'm thinking it would need to be something out of primarily masonry. You know, I'm looking at something like $50,000 budget for right now to do the, a look at it. And again, do you think that's something your staff could handle in-house to at least be able to look at what type of designs might be necessary?
Yeah, 50 grand was kind of what was popping into my mind. We wouldn't, what I'm thinking is we'd be able to, like you said, piggyback off of other people's designs. So there wouldn't be a whole lot of design for the actual structure. The main part of the design would be the actual structural design that's going to support it, which we don't have a structural engineer on staff. I wish I understood more about that, but I don't. So that would be probably the only design. And for a large footing or a pad, the design wouldn't be that expensive. So I'm confident that 50 would cover it.
All right, thank you. Any other, Mr. Adams?
I guess I'll just say that I certainly think it's an area that it's worth exploring. You know, I hear from people who, oh, yeah, you know, I went down to the old pet cemetery and I put my dog there, even knowing that they're not supposed to, you know, and that does cause some issues, you know. And we want to be sure that people have a respectful place for their pets. And at the very least, I think it's something we should consider. And we have the land available, you know, as we move forward on it, then, you know, it might not, it might not pan out, and that's fine, too. But, you know, now is the time for us to discuss, you know, what we, you know, what we might want to consider spending our money on. And so I think at the very least, it's worth considering.
And I should have clarified, too, as you pointed out, the old animal cemetery is in the conservation area. So it's not just that people are asked not to inter their pets there, it's against the law. It's within the conservation area, and the land is not to be disturbed within that. So that's also part of the conversation as well. We don't want people to be breaking the law as they're trying to pay respects to their animal. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I understand the terminology. So we're not talking about a cemetery. We're talking about an above-ground building that would hold-
Above-ground, no, it would only be for ashes, so.
Okay, is that-
Creatures for cremated remains.
Okay, so I think when we were talking about that other building, the human place, it was a columbarium that you could store the ashes in jars and boxes and things like that. Any idea of what the size we're thinking about doing? I'm trying to-
I'm open for suggestions.
Again, I think that's where this initial step is needed, is to determine that type of thing. You know, again, I know these are not uncommon. So I think there should be plenty of examples of what might be used. I know of at least two of the grave sites out at the old pet cemetery where there are horses buried. So would rules have to be established that, you know, the animal could only have a maximum weight of something? I, you know, again, I don't think we need to decide that at this point, but certainly those types of things would need to be a consideration. Did you have other questions, Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, we talked about a perpetual fee. So we could look at also what the demand for this would be and what a fee that would also include the maintenance of the, long-term maintenance of the building. Okay, yeah, that's all I was-
Well, these might not necessarily even be buildings. These may just be structures that have the creatures or the, where the ashes could be deposited.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I would make the motion then to budget $50,000 towards the design and planning of a pet mausoleum at the existing animal shelter property. And I have been told, would don't put it right next to the animal shelter.
I heard about that.
Okay. Do we have anyone wishing to second that motion?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So I only have two more items on my list, unless there's any other additions, removals, changes that you guys want to discuss. The control tower and fuel farm.
Okay. Again, these were items that I had discussed with staff, because I didn't believe we'd gotten there all the way. Regarding the fuel farm at the airport, you know, my discussions with staff have been that the money is currently in the airport fund. The airport fund is an enterprise fund. So any revenue generated at the airport can only be spent at the airport. It cannot go anywhere else. And the intention is to not have our normal tax dollars pay anything for support at the airport. So currently, within the fund of the airport, there is the money available to replace the fuel farm. And we have underground tanks that, while not leaking now, the recommendation is that they've hit their life expectancy. Underground tanks are no longer the way that that's done. So there are reasons why they need to be taken out of the ground and have above-ground tanks installed. So that is why I've asked for this to be discussed again. I know that there have been discussions about putting out to bid to have someone come and say they would build the fuel farm under some type of contract. That would usually mean there would be a contract where they would then have the right to sell the fuel out of the fuel farm. Again, that is a city airport. It's owned by the city. It's maintained by the city. And I believe that if someone wants to make a proposal later as far as managing the fuel farm, they can certainly make that proposal. But that is infrastructure at the airport that revenue has been generated for over a period of time that needs to be done. And I believe the best way to do that is to have the city go forward with the replacement. And then if some other arrangement can be proposed that would be beneficial to not just the airport fund, but the airport users, I think that's a separate question that can be looked at in the future. Any other questions or comments regarding the fuel farm? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just say that, you know, it obviously needs to be addressed. The fuel farm needs to be addressed. I think, you know, making sure that, you know, if the money is there to address it, then it should be addressed. With regards to an RFP, I think, you know, keeping our options open, if people are interested in wanting to, you know, of course, I think we should be open to any of those types of concepts where, you know, whether it's, you know, just the managing portion, or if they really do want to invest in the infrastructure, you know, at least leaving that open for consideration. But it doesn't change the need that, you know, if nobody comes forward, we can't just sit there and let it continue to stay in its current state. So it needs to be addressed.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I like the idea of the, an outside management of the aviation fuel system. I know that there's been concern based on coming up with fuel standards for something that we would have to enact, but also that which competes with the city for the sale of fuel would enact, and that's a whole another story. But I do understand that we need, somebody needs to make the investment very soon in terms of the replacement tanks. It does seem like there are companies that do that, that will do fuel farm management. Have we spoken to any of them? Has, have any of them contacted us?
I'm sorry, that was a vendor that would replace the tanks at their cost?
Well, different options. One is that we replace the tanks and that we own the infrastructure, but then an outside vendor actually manages the service.
Yes, there are such that would do, provide that service. There are vendors that would provide that service. I don't know that we've RFP'd that specifically, Ms. Adoo. No, we have not, we've not gone out for an RFP just for management services previously.
So currently, we manage it ourselves?
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay. I guess I have two different views on it. I mean, one is to have somebody come in and just take care of the whole thing, but then that turns over the infrastructure to someone else. I'm just curious, if an airport, I haven't done this research, if an airport our size, is it more typical for a outside company to run the fuel farm? Or for there to be ownership of the fuel farm with an outside management company, or the third, they do both?
The commonality of that, I don't know. Ms. Adoo, have you an idea on that?
I don't know.
It sounds like it's a little bit of both. Where unique in that the city has the fuel supply, and yet we have FBOs that have that also, like McCarran, certainly McCarran, all fuel goes through McCarran. There aren't separate vendors that way. But with our square, anything to add to that, Ms. Adoo?
I would, no.
She would know.
She would know. Okay. We have the budget to do that, but it would, does it seem like there would be a greater efficiency for having an outside management company? I mean, would they maintain it? Would they, I know they don't need to deliver it because for the most part, it's self-serve, except for the fuel trucks, but-
Right, right. So if we coordinated the replacement of those tanks and refurbished the fuel farm, and then at some other point in time, make a decision of whether airport staff should manage that farm, or if we'd go out to a vendor, seek a vendor to do that management for us. The advantage, I guess, if there would be one, would be that airport staff then wouldn't be involved in the management of that fuel farm. Previous to 2018, I think, is when staff took over that management. It was managed by another, an outside entity. So it was, entity, it was managed by someone else.
Okay, so it was owned by the city but managed by an outside entity?
Yes, ma'am.
And then in 2018, it was taken over for city management?
Yes, ma'am.
How much time is required for the management of fuel farm?
I think we figure about a quarter of a person, yeah, about 25% of a full-time job.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there additional staff hired in 2018?
There was in-
So the staff stayed the same?
Staff stayed the same. We, I think we had a complement of staff that we do now, as we did back in 18.
So there was essentially no increase in personnel costs to the airport when the city started managing the farm?
Well, no, I should be more accurate. We did actually bring in administrative staff in 2019, I believe it was, or 18. But, so there was some personnel costs, and not specifically associated with taking over that farm.
Okay. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, are we planning on going out with an RFP for the fuel farm, or is that, is that in the works or not?
And we'll take direction this evening as to, again, we have the capital, we can certainly go out for an RFP for the construction of that fuel farm. There's an RFP where you go out for someone to put their capital into the fuel farm, which would result in a much longer term for them to recoup their investment, of course. Or one where, I think those would be, are two options. One, that we do the fuel farm and manage it. We do the, we construct the fuel farm and then have someone else manage it. Or we just have someone put their capital into it with a long term.
Well, my concern would be is if we remove it, the CIP, and we really don't know for sure which way we're going to go with the RFP or what we're going to get back, is that going to limit us, limit the city?
I'm sorry, could you ask it again?
If we don't know for sure how the RFP is going to come back- If we don't know for sure how the RFP is going to come back by taking that off the CIP, is that going to limit the cities?
Taking off the CIP would definitely limit us. And the, we'd go with one of those specific RFPs. I don't think we'd open it up for all of those variables. I think we'd go out for one of those variables in our RFP.
Okay, could I ask Mr. Mays his opinion on this?
I think just a couple of points of clarification. Obviously, the agenda item before you this evening is to discuss projects, either removing them from the CIP or adding them to the CIP. So I don't believe the agenda would permit you giving us direction on an RFP. However, in the CIP that is for your consideration, and what was part of the tentative approval previously, is the $925,000 for next fiscal year for the fuel farm replacement. So I think if you give us direction to maintain that within the CIP, we can come back with an RFP regarding management at a later point. But you're giving us direction that you want the city to move forward with those improvements in the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Would there be a way to, you know, you know, we're up here, I already used the phrase, you know, have our cake and eat it too. You know, set aside the money that, you know, for the CIP, make sure that it's there to address it, but then see if there is any interest in, you know, actually investing in the infrastructure itself and then covering it. And so then, and then we could see if there's at least even favorable terms. You know, that's my biggest concern, is if we do go that direction and let somebody else handle it, I think what's going to come back to us is not going to be those favorable terms. But you never know what is going to come back to you. I think in the end, what is most likely going to be the best to make sure that it is being addressed in an efficient and timely manner, so that we're providing the appropriate services out there, is to make sure that we have the funding in the CIP and address the issue, and then, you know, potentially consider management options, you know, at a later time, once that has started. But, you know, I'm just curious if there, if we even think it's worth our while to go out there and see, you know, with the types of terms that would come back to us, even consider somebody else doing the whole thing for us. I mean, because it sounds nice, right? It sounds nice to wipe our hands clean of it. But at the end of the day, like has been said, this is a city airport, and the city does have to make sure that these things are being done appropriately.
And I believe there's another factor, or actually the factor, when it comes to calculating that. The current fuel farm is what raises significant revenue for the city's operation of the airport. So to say, well, we'll just wash our hands of it, or have someone else do it and make money off of it, off of a city-owned project, I don't think the math works looking at it that way. And there's certainly a potential that the revenue that needs to be raised to operate and maintain and improve the airport goes away. It has to be found somewhere else. So I think right now, as Mr. Mays has phrased this, what we're looking at is putting the money, approving the money, in the capital improvement project list to do the replacement at the fuel farm, of the tanks that we've been told are past their useful life, and also that the preference is there'd no longer be underground storage of fuel. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, so the appropriate thing, I guess, right now would be to make a motion to keep the money in the CIP for the fuel farm.
Well, technically, it was already part of the tentative approval.
Right, but to maintain that funding in the CIP. I'm not, then I'm not sure what did...
Well, again, I think the reason that this was put forth was the issue of whether it should be removed to allow somebody to come in and say, I'll do this work for you, and you don't have to have it in your capital improvement project list. I think it's clear that it's a city-run, funded, maintained property that the city has responsibility for. So I believe it needs to be in the CIP.
So Mayor, if the council is in agreement with that, it doesn't require a motion because it's already part of the tentative approval. It would only require a motion if, as you pointed out, the council wanted to pursue an RFP that was looking at both replacement and management of the fuel farm, and so you would be making a motion to remove it from the CIP.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone wishing to make a motion to withdraw it from the CIP? It appears it will remain on the CIP. Thank you. Now the control tower.
So the control tower would actually be two projects, a siting study and an environmental impact based on that siting study. Those are the two CIP projects that are associated with the eventuality of the tower. We can answer any questions about those two projects or the tower itself?
Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
I have been, and still am, an advocate of Boulder City Airport having an air traffic control tower in terms of increasing safety. And however, it does not increase traffic. It doesn't increase noise. It organizes and expedites the flow of traffic at the lower levels. So I think it's a safety issue, and I strongly believe that the money in the CIP should remain there for the air traffic control tower.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Brid, Hos...
Yes, I would agree with Councilwoman Bridges. Thank you.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I know this is something that we've discussed several times now. The feedback that I've received from the aviation community has been to not construct the air controlled tower, but that there are other safety measures that need to be done through our management and through our contracts that we do have with the aviation users to improve the safety down at the airport. So at this time, I'm going to go with the constituents that have reached out to me who asked to remove this project.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I've reached out to a number of members of the aviation community, myself, and I've heard a mixed bag of those who think it's appropriate and those who think it's not. At the end of the day, I think it's a safety feature that is needed. At least it has been up until this time in COVID. And I think moving forward, it likely will. I think, as has been said, there's other things that can be done to mitigate some of those things, but, you know, none of it is going to compare to an air traffic control tower, which, again, I think is, would be a benefit to this community.
Other questions or comments? I have a different view as far as that this doesn't lead to additional traffic, because the only reason that the airport qualifies under the FAA program is because of the increased traffic. So I don't believe it's possible for us to ignore the fact that 88% of the traffic at the airport is commercial in nature. That's the figure that I've seen. And to say that, well, we're only at this place, or we're at a moment in time here, and that control towers don't increase the number of air operations that occur, simply ignores the fact that the only reason this is even a question is because of the tremendous increase in operations at the airport due to those commercial operations. And again, the feedback that I get from the community, not people who own planes and have an interest in what they do at the airport, but the people in this community, what I hear from them is they do not want an airport of a large size. That is not the desire. The location of that airport is far too close to homes already. Complaints about noise from aircraft, the increasing number of flights going in and out. The airport should not be the deciding factor for how Boulder City gets developed. To say that, well, you know, you accepted this here, and now you're going to have to do whatever it is, whatever anybody wants to do, whatever anybody insists has to be done for, whether it's safety reasons, or because somebody can make some money, or whatever it is, is not fitting into what I hear from residents here in the community. They're saying they do not want to see additional expansion occur at that airport. They feel it's fine the way things were when it was primarily a general aviation airport, and they are not interested in living next to, or living in the vicinity of, something that generates a tremendous amount of commercial air traffic. So all the arguments about safety, and it doesn't increase this, or those, that's simply not borne out by the facts. You know, what I see is we are only at this place because of the tremendous amount of increase in air traffic operations. The control towers would also facilitate jet aircraft. I know it's like, oh, we're not going to have, you know, passenger or commercial jets. Well, of course, we're not. But certainly, if somebody is flying commercial jets, they're going to look for an airport that has a traffic control tower, and they're going to be doing that type of thing. So rather than saying that we have to sit inside the airport and see that as our world, I think we need to step outside and look at our city and say, what kind of airport do we want to have? And one that just continues to expand and expand and expand is not what I'm hearing from residents. So my suggestion would be to remove this project from the CIP at this time, have some real input from people, especially those that are most impacted by operations down there, such as those people who live down there, get their input on what they would like to see. And if they do not want to see something like that, then we need to look at other ways of mitigating any safety concerns that there may be at the airport. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I have to absolutely disagree. I think that creates a lot of fear in people. This is based on previous traffic. There is not a huge commercial desire to come into this airport. We have limits in terms of runway weight, runway length. This is about our current traffic. This is about small private airplanes taking off and landing, coming into a pattern with commercial flights. We do, because of our proximity, I believe, to the Grand Canyon, we have helicopters that take off. We have Grand Canyon Airlines. We have commercial entities that have been around for a long time. And it's, I'm very concerned about this belief that it's just going to keep growing and growing. Air traffic control tower is simply to prevent collisions, to expedite the flow of air traffic. I, where I live, I see more airplanes above me that are going into McCarran than I do flights that are going into our local airport. I see them when I go down to the airport or go to Veterans Park, but it's, also talking to pilots, pilots follow certain noise mitigation processes. They don't fly over homes. They don't fly over residential areas. Those are issues that can be directed by an air traffic control tower to determine how they're going to take off, how they're going to land, and the pattern in which they fly. I just don't see it as being the terrific issue and need for fear that it sounds like. It's, we qualify because of our historic takeoffs and landings, not because we've suddenly become a large municipal airport.
Other questions or comments? I will make a motion to remove the control tower from the CIP in anticipation of getting additional community input before going forward with such a project.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Vote two to three.
Well, that's all I had on my list, but the way the title is wrote, any other additions, modifications, removals? Happy to discuss.
Any other items from the CIP that anyone wishes to discuss, or other projects that were not previously budgeted for? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I just had one. This isn't a removal, but just a changing of priority for the golf course. Boulder Creek Golf Course has two items for, one for restrooms on the course, and another item for restrooms for the pavilion. Right now, the pavilion restrooms are scheduled for 2023, and, so, hold on. This is five-year. Okay. I was trying to make sure I can't...
No, you're good.
...in current year. Okay. And, sorry, the golf course on restrooms are for 2025. So right now, our restrooms for the golf course itself are porta-potties. And so I would just suggest switching the priority, having the golf course restrooms moved up to 2023, and the pavilion to move to 2025. And to continue, right now, for the pavilion, the restrooms are being used from the adjoining next-door restaurant, and so just to continue that practice for two years, and remove the porta-potties first.
Other questions or comments on the subject of bathrooms?
My only understanding is why the pavilion was put first is because of the events they had down there, and just the pavilion didn't have restrooms. But, yeah, that was my only understanding was why that one was first.
Other questions or comments? I would just have one suggestion. I know that the, you don't see the use of them very much here in the West, but in the East, they have what are called composting toilets. The cost is greatly reduced because there's no need to run wastewater lines to those. The cost of these, at least out on the course itself, is substantial, might be reduced by looking at some other type of facility that's approved elsewhere. I don't know what we might have as far as our code goes, but I do know they're in use elsewhere.
I believe that's what Mr. Hall was looking into, was a form of a grinder composting type facility. I think the biggest expense right now is just the actual building. The cost of those buildings, as we've seen from the whale and concession stand, and even this restroom out here, the costs just keep going up and up. I don't remember the estimate off the top of my head for those, but I know Mr. Hall was looking into some sort of composting grinder type, because they have running the facilities all the way out there, it would be expensive.
Other questions or comments? Did you want to make a motion, Councilmember Folda?
Yes, Mayor, I move to move the golf course restrooms up to fiscal year 2023, and move the pavilion restrooms to 2025.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Other items relating to this that anyone wishes to bring up? Again, I think it's important to point out, staff had scheduled the potential for one more budget meeting. The desire is not to have a need for that, because that puts them in a position of having to make substantial changes on short notice. to make substantial changes on short notice. So I'm not saying this is the only time, but we will be, I believe, giving direction as to whether we want to go forward with the meeting on, I believe it's April 28th, or not. So if you have other items that you would like to discuss, this is probably a good All right. I believe it's within our next item that we're going to discuss the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Littrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. I have Angela Mannan in the Budget Manager here tonight, too, with me. I'm going to give a brief overview of how we got to tonight with the budget, and then she will go into the detail. But first, I want to point out that the item number 11 tonight incorporates all of the updates that were proposed, updates that were made by the council at the March 10 budget meeting. And prior to that, back in December of 2020, the department directors were given directions on preparing their budgets. They met with finance and city manager in January. We had our first budget meeting with the council on February 10. We had a citizen workshop on February 24, and then we had the budget meeting on March 10. And that's where a lot of these changes are going to be shown and explained to you tonight in the packet. I will say that there were a lot of changes that were discussed at that March 10 meeting, and when all the changes were made, that you, the council suggested, and some of the revenue revisions we've made due to newer numbers from the state, the net impact of all that, even though it's a large amount of information, is pretty much $40,000 to the good for the Boulder City budget. So it's kind of fascinating that all these, all these little pieces moved, but when it was all hashed together, it's about a $40,000 change. And Ms. Mannan and we'll go through that. And as the mayor mentioned, there are two issues, even though we gave you all this documentation, there's really only two decisions that we need from the council tonight, and Ms. Mannan and we'll go through that, too. I think that's all I want to say for now, because I think she's going to cover all the details. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi, Angela Mannan in Budget Manager. Sorry, does anyone hear me? So here at our third meeting again for this year's budget, and our goals for this meeting is to present the high level changes since our last operations meeting on March 10, request direction on remaining budget items from the council, and also determine if the April 28 meeting is necessary. So changes since the March 10 meeting, revenue, general fund revenue increased $587,000. This is partially because we received the final estate projections. Also, we moved the $284,000 in green fees revenue back to the general fund from the VERF fund. Sea tax wound up increasing $132,000. Ad valorem increased $230,000, and motor field tax increased $32,000. And then our rents and royalties for the general fund decreased $90,000 due to them going that 0.1% moving to the special revenue funds. So all combined increase of $587,000. Expenses increased $543,000, and this was all mainly from items approved on the March 10 meeting, including the $500,000 moving to special revenue funds, so 250 to compensated absences and 250 to risk management, so coming up to the 543. The projected ending fund balance still for the general fund is $8 million. So that's 22% of our operating, where our ordinance is between 8 and 16%. So other governmental fund changes, the redevelopment fund revenues increased $199,000. And again, that's because we have final estate projection numbers for property taxes. Redevelopment fund expenses increased $473,000, and that was from approvals from the March 10 meeting. So 375 were the CIPs that were approved in last meeting, and also 98,000 was the money set aside for possible historic building purchases. The more cops fund increased in expenses by 40,000, and that's partially due to the restructuring of the lieutenants and moving a police officer from more cops to the general fund and a sergeant to more cops. Other governmental fund changes, so with the changing of the allocation from 1 to 1.1% to the five special revenue funds, it winds up being $90,000 in total moving. So about $18,000 is moving to each, an additional $18,000 is moving to each of the special revenue funds, including compensated absences, risk management fund, revenue stabilization, extraordinary maintenance in VERF. And that was approved on March 10. And also, the ordinance for that will come up in the main meetings. So the changes with changing from 1% to 1.1%, we're still getting about $18 million in lease revenue. The general fund was reduced, the 90,000 is still 13.7 million. The special revenue funds is 992,000, with about 198,000 going to each of the five special revenue funds, and the 20% going to the voter approved capital improvement fund of 3.6 So other VERF changes, we moved the green fees revenue back to the general fund of 284,000, and we also moved the CIP project back to the special projects fund of 284,000. So the only enterprise changes since our March 10 meeting were the two items, two CIP items that were approved during the meeting, so the $500,000 reduction in electric fund and the $50,000 reduction in water.
And Ms. Mannan, what is the basis for those reductions?
They were the two CIP projects you guys removed on March 10. So the one for, I cannot remember what it's called, but the electric one was recommended by the UAC, and the 50,000 was the water fund, one that you got council removed at the March 10 meeting.
Pipeline to nowhere is how I phrase that. Okay. I just wanted to be sure we weren't talking about the recommended changes in rates.
Oh, no, those are, those are still based in the budget, though. The recommended rates are still, there's been no changes to those.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to our discussion items for tonight. So there's one new budget request from Mayor McManus, and it's the creation of a historic home grant program that would be funded by the general fund. And I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And the idea behind something like this is we certainly have plenty of grant programs available for businesses to make improvements. Within our historic district, the idea of a historic district is to maintain the architectural features, those that generally face towards the street, to maintain those features and to have guidelines that let the owners know, the property owners within the district, of what those features are. They may find that if they wanted to replace, let's say, a front door or the windows on the front of the house, that their, what is out there for replacements now, changes from the architectural features that were originally built with the home. And they may find that in order to maintain those features, which I believe helps maintain the value of the home and the value of the district, may cost some more. So what this program would allow for is homeowners to apply for a grant, the difference between what it would cost to do the work for generally available materials versus what it would cost to do for historically correct architectural features. You know, I believe we could put some type of limit on it of $100,000 annually and perhaps $5,000 or $10,000 per homeowner annually. I believe that being able to give this type of benefit to homeowners within the district is something that benefits our community as a whole. We bill ourselves as a historic community, and to have all these grant programs available simply for business owners and not for homeowners who make up the vast majority of the properties within the historic district, I don't think we're doing things that we could be doing to maintain that historic preservation. So that's my thinking behind it. Any other thoughts or questions or concerns? Councilmember Adams?
I think, I think this is absolutely a smart move. I mean, you don't have to sit on very many of those historic preservation committee meetings to hear when, you know, a homeowner comes up with a, plans for a change of the home and when the committee gets together and they say, well, have you considered, you know, this type of door, these type of windows? And they say, well, I looked at it, and it's just far too expensive. I can't, I can't do it. And the minute, you know, they make that concession and they, you know, because they simply can't afford it as much as they might want to, and then they replace the door with something else, replace the windows, you know, then they're no longer contributing to the historic district. And, you know, we already saw with, with the last report, you know, we continue to, the historic district's value continues to deteriorate, its contribution. So we need to do whatever we can to, to try and shore up those gaps and those shortfalls to make sure that we maintain the, the district and its value. I think, as you brought up, we've got these grants and programs available for businesses, and I think, you know, when we talk about, you know, tax dollars, we need to talk about benefiting the community and the citizens as well. So I think this, this does that, and I think it's appropriate to make sure that we're maintaining our historic district in a responsible way.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Probably for the second time tonight, I should probably disclose that I do live in a contributing home in the historic district, so I don't know, I don't know if, I don't think that requires me to recuse myself from the deliberation. Okay, thank you. But I did want to disclose that. I think it's a great idea.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is an excellent idea. I was wondering if you thought maybe we could do a percentage like we have with the other grants and then have an up to a certain dollar amount, or if that would work?
Well, again, I, I think we can structure this in different ways. My thought is that we would start out with $100,000 annually for the overall funding of it, and then within that, there could be different limits. As I say, you know, a homeowner may come and say, you know, the windows, if I go with generally available ones, they're going to cost me $8,000. But if I do something that is architecturally correct, it's going to cost me another $2,000 or $3,000. They would then be able to apply for the grant for that additional amount. So this wouldn't necessarily be helping them with something, an improvement they want to go ahead with. It would only be for what that difference between what they wish to do and what would be historically correct for the home.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to disclose that I do live in the historic district. Often, a lot of these homes are changed, you know, at least the front of the house, because that's really the contributing factor of the home, because of weatherization issues. You know, the windows get drafty, the doors are drafty, things like that. And so you're right, they look at what's the cheapest, easiest thing to do, and, you know, those doors and windows are definitely a characteristic, which adds character and theme to the historic district. And when, when they're replaced with, you know, different, you know, what's most accessible, you know, it really changes the character of the home. And so other, there's other, like federally and things like that, that do grant similar to this, we just aren't eligible that I've seen in Boulder City. And so creating something like this isn't not, it's not unusual. It is available in other communities, we just don't have that. So I do think it would be a benefit to Boulder City to, you know, to, for those property owners really to retain the value of, and contribute to the district that they live in, because there is value in that. But I would also suggest that it not be available until we have the staff on hand that understands what that takes and can help and assist the community members in direction and where to go to find those kind of materials, what would be appropriate, and, and to do that in the early steps. So because what happens a lot of time is they already have the plans drawn up, and it's just not cost effective to start over. And so to really have that in place first before the grants start, you know, are opened up.
And in regard to the, your idea about the, having the expertise available, that already is in our budget. I believe, Mr. Mays, that we have budgeted an amount to use a outside source when necessary for these types of questions.
That is correct. We anticipated, based on the council's discussions and priorities with respect to historic preservation, we've included approximately $60,000 in next year's budget for that type of consultant
So again, I, these both would start in our next fiscal year or July 1. So I think, you know, these two things are coming together as one piece.
Mayor, that'd be correct. And so similar to other guidance from the council through the budgetary process, you budget for the money. Within the next fiscal year, we would come back to the council with draft guidelines for your review and your approval before implementing the grant program.
Okay, other comments or questions? All right, I would make a motion then to budget $100,000 for grant program, subject to a limit annually of $10,000 per property, with the matching amount to be for the difference between commonly available materials and those that would meet the architectural guidelines within the historic district neighborhood.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions from staff regarding the motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's that item then, Ms. Mannan, and thank you.
Okay, I will add that to the budget, and then I will also add everything that was added earlier with CIP. And that brings us to our final topic, determining if we need the April 28 meeting.
There is one other issue that I would like to talk about. The recommendation at the last meeting to create a fund within the RDA for the purchase of historic assets. I want to clarify that that's not necessarily just for the purchase of buildings. Also, this is not a new idea or function within Boulder City. When the hotel, the Boulder Dam Hotel had deteriorated significantly, there was an effort to purchase the property and begin the process of restoring it. The city at that time had made a significant contribution towards that purchase and the restoration effort. So my proposal about that within the RDA, and again, I think we should never lose sight of what the RDA is. It is the redevelopment agency. It is to alleviate blight. It is to upgrade the image of the district as it's defined, and I think this is an opportunity that should there be another asset that is of historic significance to Boulder City, that for whatever reason becomes available and may otherwise be subject to demolition, that the city be able to partner with a nonprofit. This is certainly not an attempt to, for city government to go into the land purchase or asset purchase business, but to be able to have funds available to partner with a nonprofit or a business owner or a speculative person who says, you know what, I can purchase that property, but I need some help with it. So I just want to clarify what that fund would be used for. And again, it's not unusual, it's been done before, and I think it's a perfectly appropriate use of RDA funds, that if a situation comes up where a property that might otherwise be threatened came available, that the city would be able to contribute funds towards that. Any other questions or comments regarding? Any other questions or comments regarding that item? Councilmember Fuller?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that the RDA does have our expiration. And at the end of that expiration, I believe, RDA money would go where?
The increment that is collected at the end of the life of the RDA goes back to the taxing bodies that it was pulled from, from its creation. So, when you create an RDA, you have the tax base at that time. The other taxing bodies continue to receive their same increments, their same tax rates. The incremental increase is what is pooled to use to encourage reinvestment. So, it'll go back to those taxing bodies.
So, it is use or lose, and I believe expires in about nine years from now?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, the RDA isn't just a wait and see what someone wants to propose and give to you. You know, there is a planning element to that, you know, that I don't know that the RDA group has fully implemented ever, you know, of what that looks like. You know, we've done these grants that help rehabilitate buildings within the RDA area. But I think, yeah, there does need to be more of a plan in the future of what's going on, you know, this will expire, you know, sooner than later. And to, you know, develop that, this is, you know, obviously not something that we will, is automatically going to be used, but it is just being put aside if there is a use. So, I would support it.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I just, I think, I do agree that this is appropriate. And, you know, again, it doesn't mean that necessarily the opportunity will come up, but if the opportunity does arise for us to assist in making sure that our historic buildings are, you know, maintained and remain an asset here in the city, we should be prepared to do that, you know? And keeping our options open is always more appropriate than, you know, being proactive as opposed to being reactive. You know, once you're reacting, it's almost too late when it comes to historic preservation. But being proactive and at least, you know, trying to have the foresight of what might come down the line, I think this is exactly what that is. And I think it's an appropriate use of the money.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm uncertain how this works. Is this setting aside a specific pot of money, or is this saying a percentage of money? Or how does this work with respect to the current RDA fund?
So, in order to be able to spend it, it has to be budgeted. So, the recommendation I had was 10% of the revenues, which this year would be $98,000. So, it's currently, there's a line called building for $98,000 for this year, because it's the first year we had it. So, then it'd just be an ongoing budget item next year. It'd be an additional 10% if we didn't spend it. So, that's how I have it set up, unless you have a different request.
I do not. That had been my recommendation before. And I also wanted to point out, to my knowledge, we have never spent the full revenue amount from the RDA in any given year.
Possibly last year or the year before, due to a CIP project, but typically, no.
Yes, there may have been money that went, I believe, to the Boulder City Parkway project. There was a significant amount of money that went to that, I believe, out of there.
Yes, $300,000.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, this had been previously approved, so a motion is not required, is that correct? Thank you.
So, again, unless you guys have anything else, deciding if we want to have the meeting on April 28.
I've exhausted all of the issues that I wanted to pursue. Again, you know, we can do that, but... Councilmember Bridges?
I am satisfied that we have budgeted and rebudgeted and speculated and estimated and come up with some numbers and been excited and...
I'm feeling good.
I think you've done a marvelous job. I honest to goodness think that. The way you've presented this has been terrific. It's very understandable, putting all the line items exactly as we had discussed them. I see no need personally for another special meeting.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just say the same thing. I think you guys have done a great job. I think we've all had the opportunity to raise our concerns. And I think especially after tonight, we've really, you know, tackled some of the last remaining issues that were before us. And, you know, I too am satisfied that we have, that we've done the work that needs to get done at this point. And I don't necessarily, I don't think that that April 28 meeting is, would be necessary. I don't know that, you know, much would come of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I concur with all of that. I'm tired of changing pages. I think that we've gone through enough. And I thank you so very much for all of your hard work. And your group.
I would have one request, that once you do get everything determined, and I know we do have to vote on it anyway, that we get a new electronic version of whatever the final is.
Yes, and...
I'm not very good about changing pages, so...
I am with you, 100%. And it is on our website. If it hasn't been updated, I will make sure it's updated first thing in the morning, but it should be updated.
All right.
So, if anyone wants it in entirety of PDF, it's available there, too.
Thank you. I'll make the motion then that the April 28 proposed meeting be canceled.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And again, thank you, Ms. Pelletier as well. It took some effort to get us here, but I do appreciate all the work that you've all done on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just one last time, going over our calendar. I know you guys know the calendar by now, but... So, here we are on the 13th. I will be submitting the tentative budget to the state here in two days. We will not have the tentative meeting on the 28th. And then on the 15th, we'll publish notice of our budget meeting on the council meeting on the 25th. And then also in the meeting on the 25th, we'll have the ordinance adoption, hopefully, for the 1% to 1.1% of the allocations.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item 12 for possible action, consideration of a proposed change to the land management process list. And it is called a process?
Mayor, if you'd said "plan," then I'd start saying "plan" after.
There you go. I'm trying to help.
So, the city has a process in which the public has the opportunity, in the very early stages of city council consideration, of the potential lease or sale of city-owned land. That is the land management process. Traditionally, this occurs every fall when we present to you applications for consideration of adding city-owned property to the land management process list. However, our code also allows the opportunity to submit that application at any time. And it doesn't have to occur during the normal fall process. And that's what you have before you this evening. Skyler Energy Resources is asking for city council consideration of adding 100 acres, which you can see on the map in blue, to the land management process list. This property is directly west of US Highway 95, south of the I-11 interchange. It is directly west and north of the existing Townsite Solar Project. What Skyler would like to do is eventually negotiate for the lease of this land to add to the existing project that is already under construction. As the council recalls with this process, this is the initial step. Tonight, it is for the council to consider whether to potentially add this to the land management process list by making a motion to send this to the Planning Commission to get their input. It would still come back to the city council after Planning Commission consideration. And at that time, you would make the formal action of whether to add it to the list. It's also important to point out that even if the council were to add it to the list, it doesn't mean that it is going to be leased. Other entitlements and negotiations would have to occur with city council approval. Again, this is the very initial opportunity for council and public consideration of this potential lease. And certainly, the council has the discretion this evening to decide not to move forward with consideration of this parcel. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact, I enjoyed talking with you. And I like the idea that it's infill in an area that is filling up with solar projects, you know, rather than leapfrogging into a whole nother area, that it's the continuation of a project and filling in a space that is some of that space that's left, the space that is left for our solar development. I also appreciate the things I learned about the company. So, I'm, so I support personally putting this toward, advancing this to the Planning Commission, which I assume is the next step.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I'll make it quick. I too am in favor of moving forward with this.
Then let's make it official. I will make a motion that this be incorporated into the land management process and forwarded to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bullen, thank you for being here, in case there were any questions. Item number 13 for possible action matters relating to the utility franchise fee question. I guess I'm all alone on this one. You know, this had been something that had come up last year as the initial draft of the rate study being done by a company called Raftellus was taking shape. One of the recommendations that was in that report was to impose a franchise fee. And what that fee would be is that the city would tack a charge, a 5% charge, onto utility bills for residents to pay for the use of alleyways, streets, that type of thing. That's never been done. It's never been part of the way that the utilities are run here in Boulder City. And all the, well, water, electric, wastewater, and landfill are all utilities that the city owns and operates, with the exception of the landfill, which is done by a private contractor. So, we would be charging our residents 5% of their utility bills just because. And then that money would not stay in the utility fund, but would be transferred to the general fund. I had requested that this ballot question be put forth because I saw absolutely no value for our citizens in having such a fee charged. Since that time, in the draft, or excuse me, in the subsequent additions of the rate study, this recommendation was no longer being made. It was no longer being recommended by staff. It was no longer being even heard by the Utility Advisory Committee. Essentially, I think there was so much resistance to a totally unnecessary fee being charged to our residents that there was no longer any discussion. And as a result, what I'm recommending tonight is that we remove this ballot question as the, because it is no longer necessary, because the recommendation is no longer being made and is no longer contained within the rate study. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I'll say that I do, I appreciate the reasoning why it was put there, because I don't think any council that was actually interested in moving forward with the franchise fee would actually put the question in front of the voters, because we know what the answer would be. But, you know, I certainly understand the reasonings for wanting to remove it. And I know this was your proposed question. And so, if you feel it's best that it get removed, then I would support it being removed.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I want to thank Councilman Adams for putting it so eloquently. I was opposed to it in the first place because I felt it was a, it wasn't meant to be a rhetorical question, but I truly believe that asking the residents if they want to pay more money is going to come back with a resounding no. So, I didn't think it should be on there anyway. And that, I'm very grateful that it's going to be not on there. I absolutely support not having it on there.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will make a mo, no, I will make a motion then to remove the question regarding the utility franchise fee from the ballot in June of this year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we will then move to item number 15. 14 has been removed for possible action, discussion, update, and city staff direction regarding the city's position on certain bills introduced during the Nevada 2021 legislative session. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is your second legislative, or I should say, third legislative update this legislative session. As you recall, we had our last legislative update on March 23rd. At that time, several bills were still being introduced and staff had not had a chance to review the impact to the city. As you recall, the first two deadlines of the legislative session, which are deadlines in which bills normally have to be introduced, those deadlines were waived, allowing bill introductions to occur essentially indefinitely. So, since our last meeting, several hundred bill, more bills were introduced. A total of 908 measures have been introduced and several that the city is tracking closely. Those that we have ranked high and medium priority were added to the memorandum before you. There was just under 100 bills added to this document after staff reviewed all of the proposals being introduced. Following the update of this document and uploading it to the packet, another deadline has passed. This deadline was the committee passage for the first House, meaning that in order for a bill to continue to move forward, the bill has to be recommended out of the committee, of which it was assigned, to the entire body for consideration. Many bills did not make it past that deadline. And so, you have before you on the dais a revised memorandum. The memorandum is largely what's in the packet. However, the bills that did not move forward have now been removed and placed at the end of the document. This document will be available on the website tomorrow for the public to see. Staff recommendations have not changed. A few bills have changed to neutral, based on amendments that were proposed. But most of the position and action recommendations that were, that are there in the packet have, are the same recommendations that staff is suggesting. So, at this time, the, the role of the council, obviously, you are the policymakers and deciders of policy for the city. These bills and our staff recommended action or position are based upon the impact to the city. the city and what the anticipated effect is. If you have any disagreement as to staff's recommendation at this time for any of the bills, I'd encourage you to bring what you'd like to recommend changed and you may direct staff accordingly. Otherwise, that's the last legislative update. The bills will have to, in order to continue moving forward, will have to be passed out of their originating house by April 20th. And then the next, then they will be considered in the next house and the next deadlines will be in mid-May. Some highlights for you just briefly, that some of the policy measures that were considered were a bill to end capital punishment. That doesn't have any effect to the city, but just to highlight, you know, the highlights for the legislative session. There was also a bill to make permanent the mail-in ballot process and several bills dealing with reform of law enforcement agencies, many of which do impact the city, and we have staff recommendations on. So with that, I'll open it up, the council for consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are very fortunate to have an acting city attorney who has all of this knowledge and is also able to work with staff to make recommendations. This is unbelievable, some of these issues. And I certainly thank all of you for your help on this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I would just also like to thank how in-depth these overviews have been. I think, you know, in previous years, we might have discussed, you know, looked at it once, you know, and, you know, really, you know, seeing all of the work that's being put into reviewing these and how these things, you know, might impact our city and our departments. It really is eye-opening in just how much there really is going on up there in Carson City and how much we do need to pay attention. And I do appreciate all the work that's being done.
Councilmember Bridges?
I second that. No, really, this is the most comprehensive presentation of this and the fact that we've had an opportunity to look at this multiple times. And the way you've explained it has been wonderful. It helps sometimes reading this, my eyes start to roll back in my head. And to have somebody who can actually summarize this pretty quickly is great. And thank you for including the ones that were removed. I'm interested now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did receive some input from the community a little bit about this. I know there was a lot of bills, you know, to go through. So now that there's been about 40 removed from what was in the packet to what's current, if, you know, if there's any, certainly if there's any public input that, once it's on the website, that they can view that and give it to council, obviously opening to that. But as far, I made a suggestion last time. And so this time, I don't have any other changes or suggestions, but I do want to reiterate that I do appreciate the material and the way it's been presented for council to have. And so I just want to clarify, so on May, or sorry, April 20th, will there be another reduction possibly of this list?
That's correct. There may be even additions, or they're still introducing bills at this time. So a lot of those will probably be exempt, meaning certain bills that say have a fiscal impact or there are other reasons, the majority leadership can also declare a bill exempt from the deadline. So it may grow a little bit, but it shouldn't grow much. And yes, some of these bills may also fail the next deadline coming up.
Okay. So certainly, as those occur, if anyone has public input to share with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'll just add to what has already been said, that many of these bills that go through are being supported by legislators from the larger cities in Nevada, whether it's, you know, here in southern Nevada or up in Washoe County. And it's easy for a community the size of Boulder City to have its interests overlooked. So I very much appreciate, too, your background and knowledge in being able to review these bills, make the recommendations. And as Councilmember Folda pointed out, you know, many of these bills are now dead, although in the legislature, there's never really such a thing as a dead bill. But some of them have been cleared off. So I know there have been some comments from people about the position that was being suggested. Please take another look and see if those bills you had a concern about have been taken off the list or actually, as you've said, they've now been moved to the end of the list that you've prepared. But, you know, until it's over, until, what do they call it, CNAI occurs, we're never quite sure. But I do appreciate your expertise in being able to review these. And I guess we do not need any, well, anyone wishing to provide direction on this item. All right. Again, thank you, Madam City Attorney. We will then move to item number 16, which is our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to make comment during this period, maybe on any issue? Speakers have up to five minutes to speak. And as always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is our final public comment period. Comment during this period may be on any issue. The phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any written emails?
No, no written emails.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no one for the final public comment period, we will close the comment period and move to our last item, city council reports. Councilmember Folda?
Just wanted to reiterate that there is still food available through CCSD. The pickup location is the high school. The children are back in school, so watch those safety zone hours as you're driving by. And council will be back tomorrow morning for our city manager interview for a potential new city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
As usual, I would like to report on that emergency aid, availability of funds for rent and utility for residents of Boulder City, and also a well-stocked pantry that is also available to residents of Boulder City. The other thing is something that was asked of me yesterday, which came up in our discussion about May 1st. There seems to be concern in the business community. Some people want to know what restrictions Boulder City is going to authorize. And I think it's important for people to understand, as was explained to me, that the COVID regulations are going to go to the county. This is not a city issue in terms of decisions that are going to be made. The county is developing local plans and moving forward with reopening. It's going to be tied to the percentage of people vaccinated, and this will determine when we will be open. We are about halfway there. 723,000 residents have received at least their first dose. I think I got all those facts correct. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. I just want to say I was at the Las Vegas Convention Visitors Authority meeting this morning. Things are looking up. They do not have figures yet for the most recent month, but they feel that revenues are going to be up, as Councilmember Bridges had mentioned. As we move through the vaccination process, people are feeling that they can begin to travel again. There are shows scheduled at the convention center beginning in June, some significant shows. The West Hall, which is a near-billion-dollar project, is now complete. I had the opportunity this morning after the meeting to take the ride through the tunnel loop done by The Boring Company, a very impressive project that they have there. So things are looking up. And the way we get there, as again, Councilmember Bridges had pointed out, is we need to make sure that we get as many people through the vaccination process as possible. And until we do that, you know, let's not let up. We've seen it now in Michigan and Minnesota. They're having another surge there. I heard yesterday that of the children that are being tested, 1/4 of them are testing positive in the state of Michigan. Please continue to follow the safety guidelines, wearing a mask, wash your hands, social distance. We all know those three things very well now. Let's get us out of this. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.